He implied that it's just.
Recording.
Okay, so yours is on.
Apparently not.
That's good to know.
Where's Rick when you need him?
He's on the Zoom, so maybe he can help that way.
Steve, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes.
It looks like a yes, but we can't hear him.
If you can hear us there.
How's your knee doing, Steve?
It's coming. It's just now slow.
We're not getting any sound.
Pardon? Pardon? Make sure the mute is not on on the owl. You can hear us, right, Carol?
I can hear you.
It's just the council chambers.
No.
I try to help, but they can't hear me.
They can't hear us?
No, we can hear them, but they can't hear us.
I'm in the building, Rick. Is there anything that I could do to?
It almost looks like on the owl, there's a mute button. It almost looks like that mute button has been pushed or the volume is down on the owl.
All right, let me go tell them that.
Rick, fix the button on the owl might be.
Yeah, but it's not muted. No video, so.
So I bet you not getting audio there, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's this core. Even though we have power, I think this part is just a little. Let's be seen. No.
What should we all log on Zoom and?
Well, step one is.
Yeah, we can hear everything here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you guys can't hear us.
Hey, Rick, would it help to call Teddy on his cellphone?
I can try. I can try.
Yeah. Why don't you?
Oh, I guess they don't need this. It is going to be yours, right?
Yeah, but we need to be able to hear them.
So can you turn the volume of that one?
Yes, but I would also then suggest muting that because then we would get a Rick's calling. Hello, sir.
The bottom of the owl?
Mm-hmm. The eyes are lit up on the bottom of the owl, yes. I think Lucas, you did that, right? You made sure that it's related to the owl.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everything was unplugged when we did. Yeah, Steve, could you, I don't know, recite a poem?
Test one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Beautifully said. Thank you. That's not bad.
You know, I'd gladly sing Mel Brooks Inquisition if you want. I wish I could see Carol. Nobody expects the Spanish Inquisition.
I don't know that they can hear you very well, Lucas. Yeah, let's try.
Can you hear me now, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna. We'll get through it. So those that are not speaking right now, just make sure to mute for now. And I'll call the meeting to order. It is 7:09 noting the technical difficulties. Under adjustments to the agenda, we had the last item, which I think most of the people that are here for are the discussion interactions regarding the local public mask mandate. So we'll move that up as the first item after visitors and communications. Old business, Jake, are you fine if we take that and put that toward the end since that's more of a council discussion? For AA. Yeah, but since we're under adjustments, it's really to make sure we have time for this discussion, have the presenters, and I'm hoping we can get through the rest. If you have a different spot on there you'd like to put it, I'm fine with that, too. Okay, I'm hoping we get to it, so. Okay, so with those noted adjustments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple if you're done, but do you mean interrupt?
Go for it.
Yeah, just for the council, the water and wastewater overview memo made it into the packet, but the budget sheets themselves didn't get distributed until, I think, mid-morning this morning, so Bill can give his overview. If you want to defer those until next week for, I was hoping that the council would find them acceptable and just indicate their acceptance. But if you don't have, feel you've had enough time to look at them, we can defer that. Although I'd still like Bill to give his overview. And then the with the bond update, again, the narrative was there, the overview memo, but the detail sheets weren't there. I would suggest, there's really no action required on those. We could take those up at the Saturday Budget Workshop if there were questions on the details that you don't have.
If I have counsel? Okay. Counselor Hammerick? Okay, and put those onto the agenda? Okay, so under the consent agenda E and H, since I think Bill will speak to one of those, we can put that with his discussion on 9E. So the Es will go together, basically.
Your Honor?
H there as well. Yes.
Did Counselor Hemmerich just speak?
Counselor Hemmerich noted, yeah, this is gonna be tough. Counselor Hemmerich noted to take consent agenda items E and H and add them to the agenda under new business, which we're putting underneath the current new business items 9E. So it'd be 9E there and then 3E and 3H.
I don't know about the rest of the folks, but I did not hear him.
Yeah, and that this is gonna be difficult for tonight, for sure. We don't have microphones working back and forth. So I'm gonna have to repeat every.
Possible, is it possible that the counselors that are there can zoom in with their phones or other equipment?
As a possibility. But what will happen is we'll have the reverberation of all the different machines. So, I mean, I can mute. This'll be fun. I can, if counselors want to sign in, they each have a device. We when I stop speaking, I will hit mute.
Oh, this is.
Yeah, that's gonna be rough. We could either do that or I'm just gonna have to repeat everything everyone says. Well. So let's, we'll work on a microphone situation then to see if we can find some way to plug it in either directly to this machine and see if that will work, or if we have another microphone here that will work.
And Mayor Herring, are you aware that we are not seeing any video of the room either?
We are aware of that. The owl camera is down in the room, so that means the camera and the audio in the room is currently down, so. Counsel, I would look for a motion to recess until 7:30. So motion by Counsel Wazza Zach, second by Counsel Hemmerich. All those, any discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And no one is opposed, so we are recessing for about 16 minutes so that we can try to get the audio fixed. Thank you, everyone.
So I think if anybody has come on, we are waiting for council chambers to get the technical issues taken care of. Before, we had recessed for a few minutes until about 7:30.
I don't know, Michael, if anybody can hear, but when we were going to have our meeting, the owl was unplugged in an unusual place. It has a couple of plugins on the way to it, so I don't know if that's something that's going on or not. I didn't hear the whole problem.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm trying to reach Teddy right now on the cellphone because I noticed the other day it looked like somebody must have caught one of the wires and bent the plug on the bottom. So actually, he's calling me now.
Thanks.
See that somebody else came in. We are having some technical difficulties with audio. And council has recessed until 7:30 to try to figure out the audio issues. And just want you to know that it hasn't been canceled. We're just waiting for the audio to be fixed. Tommy, are you still on?
Anybody that's come on, we are having some technical difficulties. And we are recessed until 7:30 in hopes that we can get our audio and video issues taken care of. Think we need elevator music.
I've got two City of Berry's now, if that makes a difference.
And some new people come in, just want to say that we are in recess right now because we're having some technical difficulties. And should be online shortly.
So can people on Zoom hear me currently?
Yes.
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 So currently the owl camera is not functional. Billy Hearn has gone to alumni hall to find the second camera. He's going to try to bring it down so that we can attach it. If that doesn't work, council would need to decide if we should. One, just convene here normally to kick everyone out except for one person to be here so that everybody can be via Zoom. And it doesn't have to be everybody, but we can try to find a way for those that are here to speak into the microphone. That somehow it would be really taking this laptop, turning it for the person who's speaking and turning it back. And that, you know, it'd just be a weird way to run the meeting, but we'd have to do it if possible. A third option would be for a council to reconvene to another time. And we can set that while we're all here. So since it is 7:34, we were saying that we were reconvening. I wanted to make sure to address the public so at least they know. And I'll open it up for suggestions from counselors. And you can't hear them, so I'm going to have to repeat. Counselor Booton?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we have a really full house tonight with the mask issue. And I think that that probably should not be tabled. We could certainly table the other issues. But with, you know, the general public coming out to discuss that, that might be something we want to.
Okay.
Continue going on forward.
It sounds like suggest holding off a little bit longer to see if we can find a another alternative. And then if not, I'm looking for other suggestions. So Council Hemmerich had his hand up. Oh, and then Council Real. Yep. So Council Real, I'm sure you did not hear her, but she basically stated, yes, wait for Bill A. Hearn. And then if that does not work, we will table it so that everybody knows when we would be tabling to. Or I should say, we would be recessing to not tabling. And that way there we would have time for the discussion for everybody to attend. Council Waszczak.
Yes, I also think that it's incredibly important that we make sure everyone has heard on this. And I'm also conscious of wasting people's time tonight. So I would not feel comfortable if we don't have a solution within the next 15 to 20 minutes. I would not feel comfortable asking people to stay. But I do agree that Michael, I want to make sure everyone gets to say their piece on this. And I think that we want it to be a way for the people to communicate. So if we're on less than ideal technology, I'd be afraid that people aren't going to get equal opportunity to say their piece.
Okay, so what I'll do is we are still.
Your honor.
Yes.
So if we're, there is a possibility that, I mean, everybody in the room can hear us on Zoom, correct?
Yes, but it's it's light, but yes, they can.
So I'm wondering if people that want to speak via Zoom, you could let them speak. And hopefully we get everything back in working order when it comes to city council. Because it sounds like the only people that can't speak is city council. And those in the room.
So I think what Michael's meaning by this is say, I am able to go down there with the laptop. I sit and then members of the public that want to speak that are here can do so. They would have their two minutes. We'd also then allow everyone who is here via Zoom to speak because we can hear them and they would be able to hear people here. And by that time, we might have a technology enhancement for for further items. And if we can't, we would have at least heard everybody for that discussion for tonight if and take action if necessary. And then the rest of the agenda, we'd most likely have to defer. Okay, so. You can, but what I'm going to do, I want to come down there so that members of the public. We're listening for a lot of this, it's going to be a lot of the public comment. And then after that, if need be, we can have counselors come down. So just for everybody's awareness, everyone, I believe, can hear me. We're going to move forward with the discussion. We had an adjustment to the agenda at the beginning of this. So the first item that we were going to address was the mask mandate item. And that means all the other items right now are currently on hold after the agenda until we can get to that point. Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, would you, would you care to just take care of the consent agenda, but for the two items that have been moved off? And then move on to the mask issue?
If that's fine with council, move forward with the consent agenda items. Okay, so I'll look for a motion. So moved by Council Sean Bell, second by Council Stockwell. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we have a list of licenses for consideration that are part of the consent agenda. Would you prefer that we defer those to the next meeting?
Can you read those off? And I think that way there, members of the public here would be able to hear.
Okay, so food establishment licenses, the Elks Club, the Meltdown, American Legion, Mr. Z's. Quality Inn, Chinatown, Subway, Mu Toa, Bamboo Gardens, Asian Gourmet, Siaku, Ramen. Domino's, Reynolds House, Dunkin' Donuts, and Hollow Inn and Motel. Food Takeout, the Two Champlain Farms locations, North End Deli Mart, Beverage Baron, and Quality Market. Entertainment licenses, Reynolds House, Vermont Granite Museum, Berry Historical Society, Berry Opera House, American Legion, and the Meltdown. And movie theater license for the Paramount Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, and those were all included in the packet.
Yeah.
So we've heard the consent agenda items. We know that three E and three H have been removed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed, nay. So that's unanimous for you, Carol?
Thank you.
Yep. Carol, do you want to give your treasures report since it's just verbal?
Clerk's report, I just two very quick things. I have updated the election section on the the city website to include nominating petitions, consent of candidate forms, lists of. Officers to be elected at town meetings. So anybody interested in those positions, you can find the the information on the city website. Water and sewer bills went in the mail today and are due by January 3rd because December 31st. Is a holiday for City Hall and City Hall will be closed. So the next business day is January 3rd. I do have two quick items for liquor control.
Okay, they're in session.
We have a new first and third class liquor license for Pearl Street Pizza at 159 North Main Street. And we have a an education's educational sampling event permit application. For the Vermont Burlesque Festival in the Opera House at January, on January 21st, 2022. I don't know if you want to take them together or separately. They do have the appropriate department approvals.
Is there a motion to take them together? Moved by Council Waszczak, second by Council Hemmerich. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed, nay. Okay, so everyone's an aye except for Michael's abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, did you want to defer your manager's report or do you want to?
Well, just let me speak to it. I was consumed on other city business Sunday morning when I normally prepare the report. I didn't realize until this morning that I hadn't prepared one. And was otherwise consumed today, so I will just take a pass on the manager's report. And I have nothing verbal to add to the non-report.
Okay, any questions with the manager? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anybody to address something that was not on the agenda currently? Looking at the crowd, seeing none, looking on the Zoom, seeing none. And. Not in the chat either. Okay, so with that, we are at the item for discussion. It is 9K, the discussion interaction regarding the local public mask mandate. Bill did just show up. I will look to. Council to say, can we take a five minute recess to try to get that up and running? Find the people of the crowd, okay. Thank you, everybody, for staying around with us. So we're going to try for about five minutes. Hopefully it doesn't take that long, but we're giving the five minutes just to make sure.
Michael, can you hear us?
Let's go.
All right, can someone say something so we can find out if we can hear you?
We can hear you.
So if we need to say something, but I cannot hear them.
We can hear you.
So Steve, let's try all with you. Can you unmute yourself? And just speak away.
Test one, two, three, four, five.
Hey, Mayor Herring, this is Ethan from CVTV. It sounds like you guys aren't going through the microphones anymore. We can't hear you very well.
Ethan, I'm guessing they direct connected that camera system to the computer and it's not through the the distribution box that you guys have.
Yeah, okay, I'll head over there and and change the settings so we can hear them. Because it's like how it was before, I can barely hear.
Okay.
Let's see what happens. I think it's going to cause echo, but. Then. Right. I'd suggest we abandon ship on this camera and move forward with the public comment, well, the.
Yeah, I think, I think Counselor Waszczak would be correct on that. We need to, we need to allow people to speak. They're here, let them speak.
Michael's nodding along. So then you have to remute that. And you might as well, well mute that one, yeah. Pass this to you.
Okay, can everybody hear me now? Okay, so we are at item 9K, which is the discussion on the mask mandate. We are going to open up for public. We have two, three, four, five. We have two, three, four, five, six people here in the room. I will try to rotate through the individuals that are here first. And then if there are others on Zoom, make sure to put your hand up for that discussion. So.
And Lucas, two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a just a reminder about the chat, the quorum? For the people into.
Oh, for those who are here.
The chat is not used for side conversations.
So if anyone's getting any feedback, reiterate, it seems like we're doing great and we'll continually forward. We just don't have side conversation about these types of items on the site here.
We won't be able to monitor it right now anyway.
Okay. Understand. Okay, how about now?
Better.
Okay, Jackie Douglas, who had the bad echo, is saying now it is good. So first person in the room, do you want to come up? Two minutes, state your name, and then have your message.
And then I'm just going to put the chat window down so that you can speak.
Hello, my name is JJ Norway, Jeffrey Norway. I'm a citizen of Berry City and I'm the owner of Mr. J's Craft Beer Store. I want to start off by saying I unquestionably respect everyone's decision for themselves regarding COVID. I respect all businesses and their policies regarding masks. All businesses should have the right to require masks if they choose. Above all else, it's not okay to harass someone for doing their job and asking someone to put on a mask. I also want to make it absolutely clear, I will never be forced by any level of our government to wear a mask in my own store ever again. I wore a mask for over a year until everyone had the opportunity to be protected from severe illness and death by the vaccine. I'm not anti anything. This is not in any way a message of hate. Boundaries are most important with those whom you love. I am 100% completely in charge of my body and my face, regardless of any vote by the Berry City Council here tonight. My business may be a public place, but it is very much private property. It would be very concerning for the council to control the faces of its citizens on their own private property this deep into the pandemic. Even if you think everyone should wear a mask, you must vote no if you value my bodily autonomy as well as your own bodily autonomy. Thank you.
All right. My name's Josh Dickinson. I own Gusto's right across the street. I'm reaching out today to express my concern about implementing a mandate for Berry. As many of the local businesses, Gusto's is still reeling from the impacts of the last year and have this caused. I was fortunate enough to qualify for many government and private loans and grants to help me take care of my own standing bills and rebuild my business. But those funds are merely not enough to continue support support me if my customer, my customer base is reduced yet again. He also grateful to say that our community has been insanely supportive, but their finances and patronism can only last so long if further restrictions and mandates are created. I've been extremely cooperative and followed every government, its state and county mandate. We have always taken all the precautions. We let everybody know through our social media, which everybody checked and followed through with that, that if we had an outbreak, we took all our responsibility. And we even closed down for a couple of days to make sure our restaurant and bar was cleaned properly. It is. It is. It is easy to characterize a restaurant or a bar like Gusto's as a superficial business and then a community, but Gusto's is so much more than that. Not only in the mine and not only is it mine and my life's livelihood, but it's also been a home for numerous charity events and sponsorships for the Berry community. There's been bike rides, we've donated money to local homie homeless shelters, and we've even given Thanksgiving dinner for free.
Josh, just closing up two minutes.
So with that said, I would respect that the mandate does not pass unless, because to be honest with you, I'd be scared if my business certified. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you want to try to?
Wasn't ideal to have that going on while I was speaking.
So we're going.
Could they hear what I said?
You can hear what you said.
I also find it disrespectful that he was messing with the speaker while I speak.
Totally understand.
Should have audio now.
So can you ask, since you have the audio there, if anyone on Zoom can?
Ask anyone what?
Ask Steve if he can speak to see if we can hear him. Steve, could you?
Good.
You guys should all be able to.
I'm good. Test one, two, three, four.
I hear it on the TV, it sounds like.
Yeah, it should be coming out of here.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Very big lights.
So sorry, you're on the TV speakers.
Steve, try again.
11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16.
One more time.
17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22.
It's faint, but we can hear you. There is a little bit of an echo in here. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak to this? Yes. Yep, two minutes and just say your name for the record.
So my name is Frederick Lapin. I'm here representing both myself, my father, Freddie Lapin, and Vilar's Martial Arts of Berry, Vermont. Like everybody else, you know, COVID has been very detrimental to both small business and lots of people's livelihoods. We went through a rough patch. We've, you know, we had to switch our entire curriculum from, you know, in person, and especially being the martial arts, it's a very, you know, close bodily type of thing that you are engaging in. So to go from that to Zoom classes is a very, you know, hard shift. So that being said, you know, since we've gotten through past that and we're back in person, you know, we we feel, especially being in business for close to over 30 years, you know, we've presented a very safe and wonderful place for people to come and work out and learn and to be a good member of society. And that being said, you know, there's a lot of people there who have come back and have gotten used to not wearing the mask, especially if you're in a workout kind of situation. It can be very detrimental to, you know, your breath. It can make you overheat, all that type of thing. It's very hard to engage in an activity such as martial arts or our cardio systems when we have to wear those masks. But also being said, by putting the masks on, one of the things I'm worried about is it's going to drive business away from here into surrounding towns that might not have something like this. So, you know, places, other martial arts studios and surrounding areas that don't have these mask mandates, you know, a person might see, oh, well, I have to wear a mask here and I'm not really about that. Well, there's one place, you know, in a town 10 minutes away that I'm going to go there and it's going to drive. And this isn't just martial arts studios. I'm saying, you know, any type of business. You know, there's a lot of people who might be driven away from a place because they've decided, you know, I don't want to wear the mask. It is, and it's their personal choice. Now, that being said, it's going to drive that business to places.
You're at two minutes.
Yep, that, you know, might not have that same sort of mandate. Thank you. So I would say vote no to the mask mandate.
Thank you. Anyone else from in the room? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to hop down here for now to see if there's anyone who's on Zoom. I'm going to have to use the microphone, the remote, because there's a lot of reverberation in the room. So I see the hand of Bob Fool is up. Bob, you have two minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. I haven't seen a proposal of this mask mandate, so I guess we're just gathering how the community feels. Because where's the outline? Where's the exemptions? Where's the cited data? Who's enforcing it? So it seems like we're just talking about it. The, you know, that you have to put a proposal. You know, where's the draft? Vermont has no state of emergency, so is Barry declaring a state of emergency? Are we going to hear from my health department on current data? I see we have two reps, Anthony Walz, I mean, Walz and Representative Anthony, maybe they can clue us in on data from Barry in Washington County. So that's what I'm looking at. Yeah, Barry's going to lose business. You know, what the business owner said makes sense. But if you're going to pass something, you better cite empirical evidence that can be verified, not just the feel-good policy. So again, you're talking about a mandate. Where is the copy of this proposal? If you're going to vote on some tonight, then it has to be, how can we discuss it if we don't even know what's in it? That's all I have to say. Oh, and can I add one thing? The library, the sidewalks are not plowed to that library. So before you give them money for whatever you're doing, I think it's their responsibility, but it's a sheet of ice. I just want to make everybody aware of that. So if you can pass that message along, that would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is William Toborg.
It's almost impossible to hear.
Since the speaker is over here, do you want to see if sitting at that chair helps with your, the volume for you?
Say that again.
Since the the volume is actually coming through the speakers on that, we have it at 100, which is the maximum. Do you want to see if sitting at that chair is helpful?
Mr. Mayor, was it better when it was coming through the computer but not the TV? I don't know. That's a question. I could hear it better through the computer. I don't want to derail this anymore. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we would. I'm going to try one more since we're in the middle of this. And then, Bill, you have two minutes and then we might have to readjust again after this.
Okay. I'm going to start. There are three things that I want to bring up. First, we had an outstanding secretary where I work who worked through the pandemic, could not be vaccinated because of an of a pre-existing condition. Once the governor put in the mask mandate, she couldn't wear her glasses because she couldn't see if she didn't have her glass, if she had her glasses on because they fogged up because of the masks, leading to migraines and eye strain. That's something that is going to happen if you have a mask mandate. I also would say that I will not go to stores requiring masks, especially after working for nine hours a day, having to wear a mask, which causes me to cough, which potentially could be dangerous because I don't think it's COVID because it's something that happens only when I wear a mask. And finally, the so I haven't been to the library, for instance, in over two years because they're requiring masks. Finally, right now, businesses have the choice. They can require masks, they can prohibit masks, or they can allow masks. And I think that's probably the best way to handle the situation. But I think that I'm not the only one who would not, will not go into stores that require masks. And so I think it would be very detrimental to the businesses of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to comment back, all these microphones would be lost, so no one would be able to hear you as the other part of it.
We can hear.
Okay. Next, I see Thomas Kelly. Thomas, you're recognized for two minutes.
All right, thank you very much for the opportunity. I don't have a whole lot new to say. I think I want to make it clear. I avoid wearing masks. I'll shop where they're not required. And I'll shop where they're not, any mask mandate is not enforced, and I won't shop where I have to wear a mask. So I think the evidence in support of masks is weak at best. I think it's it would be overbearing government policy to mandate masks. It's overreaching. I don't think it's necessary. I agree with the comments. I think Jeffrey Norway put it very well. And I would ask the council to decline to even take this up and to certainly vote no to any mask mandate. Mandating them is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Leota. You are recognized for two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I think that everyone should be masked indoors in public places for many reasons that I'm not really going to go into here. There's also lots of folks here who believe just as strongly as I do that masks should not be required. And the bottom line is that I'm not going to change their minds and they're not going to change mine. And I would bet that almost everyone has made up their mind one way or another on this issue. And this puts council in a really tough position. And for that reason and more, I'd like to offer something else to consider. What I personally would like to see, instead of a mask mandate, is that every indoor public location in the city be required to post at their entrance whether that location requires masks or not. And I would hope that residents would honor a business or organization's choice to require masks or not. Some businesses and organizations have chosen not to, some have chosen to require them. And these businesses have made their choice for them and their visitors as they see best. If indoor places were required to post their position at the entrance, then I and others know what to expect when we walk in. I can choose to enter or not. And for myself right now, I won't enter if I see masks are not required. I just want to know what to expect so that I know what to do and what feels right to me. And others can do the same, but we can only do that if we're informed. Requiring that the establishment's position on masks be posted at the entrance allows all of us to make an informed choice. And it avoids putting counsel in this difficult position of of trying to navigate what to do when there's no right solution.
Two minutes. Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Guston. You're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow on Lisa put very articulately at the beginning of her statement, something I was going to say, which is that I personally feel very strongly that for me, it is important to wear a mask in a public space. I have family members that I love dearly who are not able to be vaccinated, and I do not want to bring anything home to them. And I want to protect the people in my community when I go out and about. That said, I think that the recent choice by the governor to to put on this conversation to the local level is a failure of leadership by Governor Scott. And it just should be a statewide mandate if there is going to be one. I'm not advocating one way or the other for that, but simply put, public health is not divisible by municipality. Berry is only first, fourth, or miles. And if we are surrounded by municipalities that do not choose a mask mandate, our impact is regrettably minimal. And for that reason, I don't, as. Um, and for that reason, I don't, as, as Lisa again eloquently put it, um, I don't know that anyone is going to change their mind about their personal decision to wear a mask at this point. After, after what, a year and a half now? But what, what realistically can a patchwork of, of decisions make? A much of a dent in, in a general public health policy. Um, and, and for that reason, I, I, I don't think that Barry City should be passing a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the hands that were up. Amanda's and Lisa's were there. So if you can put yours down, um, then I can just make sure to manage this. Okay. Uh, and then we do have Bernadette Rose. Bernie, you're recognized for the next two minutes.
Thank you. I'm really glad that Lisa spoke tonight. I was trying to think about how I might encourage people to wear masks. I use a mask and I believe that masks do help and but I also feel that we're not going to change anybody's minds. And I really like her suggestion that stores and businesses, any place that we go, that's a public place, inviting the public in, post on their doors whether or not they, um, are having masks worn in their, their store or building or place of business. That would make it possible for me to decide if I want to go into a store or not go into a store or a business. So I propose that we encourage the Barry partnership maybe to get involved with this. I don't know how to do it. But that businesses do the posting as to what they want and then they can leave it. And I also agree with what Amanda said. I think those were two, uh, two wisdoms of, of not forcing people and, uh, that we're not going to change people's minds. And I appreciate that all the women had this idea and that none of the men wanted to wear masks.
Thank you, Bern. Sarah Hellman, you're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I actually just wanted to echo, um, what Bob Hool was saying and the fact that there is no proposal to look over to see the details of any sort of mask mandate and how that all would work, who enforces it, you know, what, what's the penalty or, you know, any of that stuff. So, um, I am, I am not in favor of, um, a mask mandate. I'm not in favor of a mandate of any kind. I think that a business should have the choice to, uh, choose whether or not to require masks in their business. And then I can make that decision. I think posting on the, on the door, whether or not they want people to wear masks is fine. I don't think we need to force them to do that. Um, maybe just encourage them. A, a lot of this is, is I, in my opinion, government overreach and, um, we should allow businesses to have the freedom to run their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Reynolds, you're recognized for the next two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of the pandemic coming to an end for us at some point in my future life. And as such, um, I do wear a mask and I wear it everywhere that I go where I'm in, where I'm in touch with other people. I have to say that Lisa's suggestion, I think, is brilliant. Having each business make a conscious decision and post it for the members of the public would certainly help me make decisions about where I can and where I can't go so that I don't have to stay home for another couple of years or another five years or however long it takes for this to be over. Um, as a community, we need to find a way to come together and make public health the number one goal. And the end of the pandemic is really what's important for the public health. So anything that we can do to support that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Anderson, you're next for two minutes.
Yeah, um, I guess I'm not in support of a mask mandate because, you know, there's some people that, you know, they're going to break the rules. So there's a lot of things we don't know, like who's going to enforce it. You know, and things like that. And right now, you know, we're kind of in a position where, you know, the governor put all this onto these individual communities. And we don't really know, you know, how well they're going to work in, in other communities. So we don't necessarily need to be the first place, you know, to step up and impose a mask mandate, you know, when there's really not a lot of data, um, available to, to, um, you know, from other communities to, to rely on, you know, I think they have one up in Burlington. I'm not sure how that's going, but maybe, you know, stuff like that should be checked into, you know, before moving forward because there's people in the community that are, you know, under, you know, they're minors and stuff like that, and they don't necessarily understand any rule. And then you got people that, you know, are going to be in, trying to enforce these rules because, you know, there's probably not going to be any, I mean, are the police going to go around and ticket everybody that doesn't wear a mask or not? And then you have just regular, you know, people out in the community enforcing it. But that's just my opinion. It's, you know, um, I don't, I just don't think it's a good time right now. And, you know, with the vaccines rolled out, I mean, people can go get a vaccine. And, you know, they should probably give it a while and then look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I do not see any other hands up. Um, there has been a person that has come in during the meeting. I just want to make note if, uh, anyone else wants to speak on the issue. And if you don't, you don't have to.
No, it's fine. I mean, I just came in a little bit late.
So if you want to speak, uh, Kim, right over here, and we'll give you two minutes.
And Renita's hand went up after, um.
Just say your name for the record and you have two minutes to speak on the issue.
Thank you, sir. Yep, Freddie Lapin, um, own a business here, Valerius Martial Arts. Been in the community for over 35 years and I just know in my experiences as an exercise business and stuff, having masks are very detrimental to the business. I know when the lockdowns and the masks and all that was going on before, uh, we were hanging on by a shoestring and I did not want to kind of go through that again in that sense where we just barely got our businesses back to where everything's starting to roll again. And we don't want to get to a point where it's going to be preventing people to encourage to go out and visiting businesses. I heard a great idea about putting, uh, a sign up about seeing if masks are optional for that part. I think that's a great idea. And then let the consumer make it, make the decision. And I think that would be very fair. Yeah, thank you.
Renita Marshall, you're next.
Okay. Hi. Uh, so one, I'm against the mask mandate, so I'll just keep it short because of all the reasons that everybody's already mentioned. As for mandating that stores hang up signs, I'm also against that. I don't feel that the city needs to tell the business owners how to run their business like that. I have seen that the stores have signs. Most that I've seen have said, uh, we ask that you wear a mask if you're not vaccinated. And there are a few businesses I've seen that specifically state that they are asking for a mask, uh, no matter what your vaccination status is. I respect any of those decisions and I will wear a mask in a store if asked. Um, but I think that mandating, um, the businesses to have to have a sign seems a little overstepping. And perhaps we just encourage it and give them the opportunity to pick up signs if they choose to, rather than forcing them to have to saying, hang a sign in their store. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else that has not been recognized, looking to be recognized, to be heard on this issue? I don't see any in the room. And I don't see any other hands up on Zoom. So with that, I'll turn this over to council. So counselors, if you want to resume back at your desks. So for those on Zoom, um, uh, we do have the speakers on mute right now. So if you do want to be recognized again, just make sure, um, this is the council portion of this. So we'll wait until the end of this discussion. So turning this over to council, I, I did want to make a couple of just minor comments, uh, because of the timeline of, of how this occurred. Uh, there were a couple of municipalities that did want to enforce local mandates. They had asked for that permission. Uh, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns had petitioned on behalf of some of those locations to the governor's office. The governor's office, in order to allow for such a mandate, uh, needed to bring back the legislature back in session. So he proposed something to the legislature. Uh, the legislature took it up. The legislature, um, you can see how everyone voted the way they voted. But they, uh, voted in favor of allowing municipalities to have those individually. So it's not just one person or one organization. It's actually been a lot of different groups that have been discussing this. So I just want to make sure that people were, were clear about that. Um, but with that, we do have, um, now statutory authority to make those decisions. So I will recognize counselors as they want to be heard. Uh, Council Hemrick first.
Yeah. So I guess I'll kick us off and ask, uh, either you or Manager McKenzie, has any city councillor proposed a mask mandate on, on this, on here or on Zoom?
I do not know of any person that has requested a mask mandate for the city of Barry. The manager had noted that because the legislature had taken action that, uh, it was something that he'd placed on the agenda to see if it's something that council wanted to, uh, enforce or look into further.
So is the manager recommending a mask mandate? Uh, cause I'm, I'm, I'm just confused as to how this, why this is on the agenda. Uh, without any context on, on briefing of like to, to Mr. Hool's point, there's no briefing on data. There's, uh, or, I know, and certainly we're not health experts, but, um, it seems like a lot of controversy has been unnecessarily raised, um, by the way, this has been brought, uh, before this body. And, and to me, I think that's, that's, that's too bad.
Sure. So the, uh, comment is that that is Counselor Hemrick that is speaking. You can't see them. So I'm going to ask that whenever you do speak, just say your name before you speak. Um, it's brought before us because actually the legislature passed a bill that said that municipalities have this authority. Um, there are some municipalities that have already taken action. There's others that are looking into it further. I know the manager, I don't want to speak for him directly, but, he was placing it on here to see if this is something that council wanted to entertain at all. Uh, to your point about local data, there is none. Um, we have such small numbers for data, uh, in Vermont that for HIPAA guidelines, we can't have anything at the local level. I actually had that as a response back through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So even if we wanted to see, for example, the death rate in Barry City, we can't. The numbers are too small. Uh, if we wanted to try to do, uh, other comparisons, it's just not available data at this point. So Steve, I'll let you respond as well and then, uh, turn it to Counselor Stockwell.
Yeah. So I'll speak to, uh, why it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda because I put it on the agenda because of pursuant to the action taken by the legislature. I thought it was very appropriate for, uh, the, the council to, uh, take it under advisement and, uh, consciously decide whether it's something the council felt appropriate or not, uh, and, and also to get public input. You've certainly got, uh, the pulse of, uh, certainly a, a, a strong group of, uh, individuals this evening. I suppose it was specifically clear in the action memo that I had no recommendation. I think it's in, the, the item is on the agenda for discussion and/or action. The council can do whatever it wants, of course. It can either, just let it die for lack of emotion, can make a motion to approve the, uh, approve a mandate or make a motion to not approve a mandate. So, um, I think this is just a very public process, uh, very appropriate and, um, uh, playing itself out.
Counselor Stockwell?
There is some data on the department, on the Vermont Department of Health website. The data is pretty compelling. You know, I'm not going to suggest that we do a ma- mandate, but here's what the data looks like. In Barry, which has a slightly smaller population than Montpelier, there are 1,559 cases of COVID. In Montpelier, which had a mask mandate, there were 403 cases of COVID. That's pretty strong data and that was from 3/20 to 11/21. That data is powerful. I understand people may not feel that this represents, uh, something that they want to act on. However, the data is out there.
Just to note, um, if you look at other data, Burlington also had a mask mandate. Their numbers are much higher. Some of that is population driven though. If you equate that to, um, deaths though versus actual cases, we can't compare that. We don't know out of those 1,559, how many people, um, that had, uh, a case actually went to either ICU or to, uh, unfortunately passed away. The other part for Washington County currently, um, because I listened to the governor's report today, um, the number of beds and ICU, there are still beds available here in Washington County. They are having issues down in Rutland, uh, and Southwest hospitals. So those are other items to continue, uh, just because we're having a discussion on local versus what would be a, uh, statewide mandate. Um, and the Department of Health actually has the ability to enforce local restrictions if they wanted to. So I, I just want to make sure people are aware of that too. Counselor Watson.
Yeah. So I don't think that a mask man, I, I, I'm not in support of a mask mandate. I'm not going to vote for a mask mandate. I think that we're at a point in the pandemic where, you know, we're getting dangerous variants because there's a huge population of unvaccinated people in this country and it's a very mobile country. Uh, I appreciate what Amanda Guston said, uh, about, you know, the governor, uh, passing the buck down to local boards. We don't have the clout. We don't have the clout of the governor's office. We don't have the bully pulpit of the governor's office and the Barry City Council at this point in the pandemic. I do not think that a mask mandate from the Barry City Council will actually change anyone's behaviors. I appreciate as well what Mr. Anderson said about, uh, the surrounding communities that we have. We could pass a mask mandate all they want. Someone can go down to the wayside. No mask mandate. Someone can go up to Walmart. Someone can go to any of the stores, uh, on the Barry Montpelier Road. No mask mandate. So from a public health standpoint, even though I completely agree, the science is there that masks and vaccinations are the two most effective ways to stop the spread of COVID and to stop people from dying. I don't think a mask mandate is about government overreach or anything like that. I think it's about keeping people safe and I think that that power is squarely within, uh, the powers of a municipal government, but I'm not in favor of doing it if I don't think for a second that it's going to work. And I don't think it's going to work. So I would encourage folks to wear masks when inside. Definitely listen to any business that chooses to have a mask mandate. And if you don't want to shop at those businesses, well, God bless you. Wear a mask, get your vaccines, get your boosters, and we'll be able to see our way out of this eventually. But I don't believe that a mask mandate from the Barry City Council is going to help seriously stop the spread of COVID in Vermont.
Counselor Reel?
So I have to, I have to agree on a lot of these things. I mean, I, I thought about this and thought about this. I know what my choice is. I'm not a doctor. I know what my choice is. My choice is to wear a mask. My choice is to get vaccinated. I can't change anybody's mind. I'm never going to change anybody's mind. You know, I hear a lot of things, well, people can get vaccinated. People choose not to get vaccinated. One of the reasons we had, still have numbers because people are choosing not to get vaccinated. People are choosing not to wear a mask. I choose not to go into stores that don't have mask mandates. We don't have, we, you know, how are we going to enforce a mask mandate? We can't. I'm not going to have police officers that are so short-staffed right now and so burdened to get calls about people not wearing a mask. That's unfair. And I hear people say, well, minors aren't wearing masks. I know kids that are better at wearing masks than adults. And, you know, I know a lot of stores and businesses that are happy to put up signs to say, wear a mask before you enter. And I'm happy to go to those, those businesses. And I know that a lot of Barry businesses are very safe and very clean and are happy to have my businesses. And I know the, the places that are not. So I'm not going to vote for a mask mandate. I know, you know, people are, are going to do what they want no matter what I say. And I'm going to do my choices for my body. So that's what I got to say about that.
Thank you.
I'll keep it relatively brief here. I, I agree with everything that's been said. I personally believe in masks. I believe in public health. I'm extremely disappointed with the country as a whole in terms of the numbers of people who have chosen to believe that public health is not something that has made us the country that we are. The fact that we have had vaccines available to us over years that protected us from polio, from smallpox, from this, from that, from all sorts of diseases that were horrific and that people lined up very happily to get. And therefore there was herd immunity because people were willing to take those vaccines. And by eroding trust in public health, my fear is that we erode the health that's been so luxuriant for us, especially if you look at other countries who have no access to these vaccines. I am not going to vote for a mask mandate. I don't think it would work. I think the people who choose not to mask, they choose not to mask. I think that people who choose not to get vaxxed, choose not to get vaxxed. I think they do it to the risk of other people. I think the people who have taken the biggest hit in this are kids. Young kids who have been used as a pawn. Young kids who have to be masked in schools. Young kids who very happily have a three-year-old granddaughter. And when I take her to the park, forgetting, because I have the luxury of vaccine, she goes, mask, get my mask. That's a sad, sad thing as far as I'm concerned, but at least many people are making the right choices. I'm for the suggestion that we have a mandate that stores put up a sign as to what their expectations are. And then people get to choose from there.
Thank you. Councillor Booton?
Yep, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. You shouldn't be able to hear me because I get it on mute, but that's okay. So I just wanted to point out regarding the numbers for Montpelier and Barry, the thing that we're not taking into account is population density. So Barry City has a population density of like 2,000 per square mile. We only have, what, four square miles? I think like four square miles in Barry City. So that would explain the reason why we have a little bit larger of cases because when you're congregated with people, that happens. It's kind of like New York. And, you know, I obviously don't support a mask mandate. I think that if you're concerned about COVID, you probably shouldn't be going into areas where there's a lot of people and staying in that area for a long time. You know, it's, you know, it is, it is what it is. So I'm glad that everybody else in city council feels that way and hopefully we can move on.
Okay, thank you. So we've heard from the public, we've heard from council. Are there any motions that anybody wants to make or move forward tonight?
I'd be specifically in favor of not making a motion. I don't want to give the appearance by voting no on a motion or voting down a mask mandate that the council is against masking because I think that's clearly not what we heard there. So I would advocate and ask the rest of the council not to make any motions. Just let's move on.
Okay, noted.
Well, and just to be clear, there is no mask mandate proposal from any member of the city council. Although I think what I've heard tonight is that we're all deeply committed to public pandemic response, public safety measures. And I think also one thing that we didn't hear tonight in the testimony but did hear through through some other communications is that there are certain businesses that have masking expectations and have experienced belligerent customers. And it may be that they might want some backup from their, from the local government to deal with that type of belligerence in their establishment so that their rules are respected and they don't have to hire a private security force to make sure that people behave in a reasonable and respectful way in their establishment. So if, you know, if there, if discussion does proceed later when there is an actual sponsored proposal and if that occurs, I don't know if that would be the case about, you know, signage. I think having backup for stores that have policies to make sure that the police can support those store owners and their policies. I think that would be important.
Okay. And I think what you would be referring to is possibly not something specifically to masking, but if anybody was in any store for any reason and not complying with the rules of that store, that if they were to ask to be removed, that they could be trespassing or some other law that's already currently in place. Okay, Steve, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. As councillor Hemrick says, there was no mask proposal from any member of the council. There was no mask proposal from the manager either. The manager just put on the agenda the timely issue of whether the council wanted to consider a mask mandate or not in light of the action by the legislature. So just want to be clear about that.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say, Steve, just thank you to the city manager for putting this on the agenda and for allowing the community to have the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that there is no motion or second or anything, if there's no further comment, then no action would be taken on this item. We have already basically ended the conversation on this. If you have one last comment?
Well, just because something got brought up after I was done, which was putting a sign on the door. I think it's pretty fair to assume that if you require masks, you can put a sign on your door that masks are required at my store. And if you don't see a sign that says that masks are required, it's pretty fair to assume that masks are not required. I mean, we just started wearing masks not that long ago. So I think it's fair to assume that if there's not a sign that masks are not required.
Thank you. So council, given our situation that we're in tonight, we do have at least two people that we're going to present. I don't know how much longer we want to try to go through like this. But Eli, if you were able to come here to present, I think that would be fine. And if there's any other items that you think we need to address tonight, please look those over. If there's things that you think we can defer, we'll try to do that as well, just because this is going to be difficult.
I just, the one thing I would flag is Donna on Zoom. I would just hate to make her wait.
And Polly Nichol was also on Zoom.
To that point, I think we have a lot of important business and unfortunately this has really derailed the regular business of the city. And we're talking about water wastewater, we're talking about housing, we're talking about all these other things. And I think it's important that we get to the business of the city, not to talk about theoretical authorities that have been extended to us because there's dozens of authorities extended in Title 24. We don't need to talk about each one until there's a proposal on the table, in my, in my view respectfully. Councillor Wazizak?
Sure. And just to note back, we have two of our representatives on the call tonight. And I think we could reach out to them to say if this was something that should not have been given to municipalities to discuss, maybe they shouldn't have voted for it. So with that, I will move on from this discussion.
Sorry, a point of order question. So are we proceeding with the rest of the agenda tonight?
So we do have some individuals for discussion point, their presentations. Eli Tui is here. Donna, I do not see on, but if we have Donna or I don't know if Steve or Carol know if Donna was to be present for the reading?
Donna, Donna had been contacted and was aware. So I just have to assume that her choice was not to attend. Rick had advised her of the resolution that it would likely be signed this evening by the castle and that we would make sure it was delivered to her. So her presence isn't or wasn't required.
Okay, so council, would you want to defer that item so that we can? I don't know if you even received the document in your packet. So I'm going to say that we will defer that item until next meeting. And if so, we can put under the consent agenda. The next item, I believe, is Eli Tui from the Working Communities Challenge. And Eli, if you want to come up for the presentation, after that, we'll see if Polly is still here. And then we can see if we have enough time for anything else for the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. So Eli?
Thank you for bearing with us.
So I'm Eli Tui. I'm the project director for the Working Communities Challenge. And we are working towards decreasing by 15% by 2030 the amount of women, single women who are living in poverty in the greater Barry area. And currently our project is really looking at the benefits cliff. That's our top priority. And for just an example of what the benefits cliff is, for women, if they're single parents, especially with children, when you increase your income and you lose benefits, oftentimes there's a gap in the amount of benefits you're losing and your total resources that are gained by any wage increase. And so we're looking at that with employers or the employers that we work with are CDMC, the Vermont Home Health and Hospice and the Vermont Food Bank. And we're looking at initiatives to fill in those gaps. Like an example right now is Farmers to You, which is a program. We're working with the Vermont Food Bank, CDMC and Farmers to You to bring food to employees of CDMC who are on that cusp to fill in that gap. And I'll give an example really specifically of a woman who works at CDMC. She's worked there for 25 years. She has three children. She's a single parent of three children. She makes about $48,000. So at $49,000, she would lose her food, her three squares benefits. If we weren't in COVID right now, she'd lose free and reduced lunch that is expanded to higher income staff. But she would lose about $10,000 worth of food benefits when she was only making $1,000 more. So looking at people, not just people who are really low income, who are on that cliff. It's actually, there's a few different cliffs that you hit depending on what benefits you're losing at different income levels. So that's why that's a priority for us because we are working with single, single women, head of household women in the greater Barry area. Another priority that we have is employer collaboration. So working on innovation, innovative things that can happen in employment at a work site. Flex scheduling would be one. COVID has hit women particularly hard. And so if you have a daycare that closes at three o'clock versus 5:30, employers can step in to maybe have flex scheduling that works different in different sectors. You know, manufacturing might not be a sector that that works in. But working with employers on those kinds of innovations. It's a lot of really exciting things happening, especially if it's Northwest, United Way of Northwest, excuse me, is doing open hiring practices. They're doing recovery-supported employment. And so there's a lot of those programs that we're actually working together with United Way of Northwest and our Working Bridges program, which is a, it's an embedded resource coordinator in an employment site. And so working with an individual in real time on barriers that are coming up for them. And that Working Bridges program is kind of what the Working Communities Challenge is also looking to expand specifically for head of household women in the greater Barry area.
So unfortunately, we're not able to show those slides, but council, you should have received those in your email. And it's interesting to look how if you make more money, you can actually make less overall because of how those benefits work. So there's definitely some consideration that needs to be done on those wage levels for sure.
Yeah. And part of what we're looking to do is to actually develop a training, those slides that I sent, looking to develop a training for employers specifically to look at those issues. If this woman that I'm speaking of right now, if she were to get a 2% cost of living increase, she, you know, could, she could fall off of that cliff and lose those benefits. So, you know, when they look to wait to increase wage floors, it may actually be detrimental and there might be other benefits that could, you know, fill in that wouldn't cause that cliff effect.
Councillor Stockwell?
How, how is the childcare availability?
That's our toughest issue, I would say. So childcare is our third priority. And really our priority, what we're looking to do is to support Let's Grow Kids in their platform around universal childcare. Because we don't have those answers. We don't really have, we can work with employers on initiatives that may, you know, may alleviate some of that. But the employers are also in a position where they can't really fix that systemic issue. So really we're putting our support behind Let's Grow Kids as far as, you know, childcare.
Yeah, just to add to that, one of the items that came up is the community center discussion was in addition to either a teen center or multi generally, general, multi-
Generation?
Generational location, that there could also co-locate a daycare center in a building like this. And then you can utilize one space possibly, have those groups in one area. And maybe that's something that could help with this program.
Yeah, that's the drum I keep beating. I'm on the task force there for that.
Councillor Wazizak?
Yeah. And so in spirit of full disclosure, I work for Hunger Free Vermont, so I deal with this stuff pretty often. And the, this is very wonky. So if you have to come back to it later, that's like, the earned income tax credit would not affect individuals' income level for their benefits, correct? Because it's a tax credit and not counted as income.
I had it in there to discuss how it would affect, but I didn't include it in the benefits cliffs pieces.
Okay. Are there other questions? So I did just want to point out there was a second document and it did have those other priorities in there. So even though benefits cliff was one, you mentioned number three. Do you want to mention number two and number four?
Yeah. So number two is the employer collaborative. So that's working with employers, getting together, having these discussions. They have a thing up in Northwest Vermont called Innovation Labs and they get together quarterly and they talk about different innovative things that are happening. That open hiring, open hiring system is one that they, you know, discuss, they do presentations on these different things. There's a program that happened, I think it was at Rhino Foods, that was a pilot for for parents bringing their young children to work and actually having them at the work site. And that was a pilot that was looking at the possibility of childcare happening in an employment site. So those sorts of innovations and things that are happening in work sites. And there's some amazing, amazing workplaces. As we're expanding the Working Bridges model, really through the Working Communities Challenge, Working Bridges has eight sites, eight work sites, large employers in central Vermont, Northeast Kingdom. And then if you include the United Way of Northwest, their sites as well, there's 24 work sites. And those are large employers, they're large and small, but there's a lot of large employers.
And is there sort of a training period that then goes through, like if you get through a training period and you're doing well, that there's a guarantee of continued employment?
That's how the open hiring process is, is very, it's a short period. It's three months and it is very strict about, you know, what the expectations are during that period. If that's what you're speaking to them.
Yeah. And then at the end of that period, what happens?
Then you gain employment. Yeah.
So and do you want to remind us again about the goal of the Working Communities Challenge?
Yep. Yeah. So the goal is to increase economic stability for those head of household women living in the greater barrier. Before COVID, 1,000 plus women were identified as being in that demographic. My guess would be that that's much higher now because of the way that COVID has hit women, especially women in the workforce. And then the really specific goal is 15% fewer women living in economic instability by 2030 than the 2020 counterparts.
How's housing?
We are not actually looking at housing for this project. It always comes up. It is something that always comes up with the Working Bridges program. There's a lot of really great data that we collect around what, and what issues people are coming to those resource coordinators for. Financial instability is the biggest one and usually there's other components of barriers such as housing, food insecurity that are, you know, feeding into that financial instability.
And just another note is thinking of the women head of households, it means that there's others in that household. So when you're thinking of the numbers of people that are affected, you can at least add a doubling of that number, if not tripling it, depending on the number of kids in each household. So it will be impactful. So I am very thankful that we were able to receive the grant to be able to work with you and to start seeing this come to fruition. So if there are no other questions from council, is there another milestone that we should try to see to have you back by to report back out?
I think perhaps after the training, after we get a training developed, I'd really like to speak about how we're working with employers about that. We currently have a cohort of six women. So maybe when we have more women too and talk about some of the progress that women- So maybe when we have more women too and talk about some of the progress that women have actually made through this program. And that's both looking at gaining employment and advancing employment. It's really what we're looking to support. And doing so, multi-pronged kind of aspects to this project.
Okay. Well, so I do thank you for coming in and coming in person and also waiting for as long as you had to. And yeah, we'll look forward to seeing you again. Counsel, just so that you know, I was a lead participant from the city. I've actually taken a tertiary role. Brooke Poulia is now serving as the liaison for the city with the Working Communities Challenge, just so everybody's aware. And it's a good fit because Brooke has been working with some of the individuals in the, the populations that's being served already, so it works well. So counsel, we do have next Montpelier's Community Development Program and Polly Nichol. Is Polly on?
I'm here. And I, I'm willing to present, or if, if you'd rather postpone to another evening, that's, that's fine.
If, I think it's very timely to have you here and it'd be great if you could present. And thank you for your patience and for being here.
Then I'm going to go down there and listen.
So.
Does she want to share a screen?
You have permissions?
Why? Give her.
That one doesn't have permissions either. Rick has permissions. Rick, do you, can you respond? Rick Tash?
I think I can do it. Hold on.
So Steve.
Sorry.
Steve, I can't get ahold of Rick. I've tried messaging him through the chat. I don't hear him here. He's the one that is actually the host of the meeting currently, so we can't do any of those functions. But with that said, Polly, if you can give an overview verbally, then please feel free and we'll move forward that way.
Okay. So I was invited, I think, to talk about what Montpelier's Housing Committee does or has done and some of the key initiatives that the city of Montpelier has undertaken around housing. I am the chair of our Housing Task Force, which was created about twenty years ago, actually by Downstreet. They were called something different then, but, and we are largely a group of citizens who advocate and educate around housing-related issues, especially affordable housing. And we've also been involved in the development of some of the city's major programs. We report to the city council at least once a year. And this summer, I report included an analysis of the housing situation in Montpelier, which is pretty dire, plus some recommendations of additional things that the city could do. Since the beginning, we've had one member of the city council serving on our committee. And we also get administrative support from city staff, from the planning and community development department. So I'm not a, I'm not a city employee. I'm a, I'm a volunteer, but I've been involved in this for a long time. And over time, our group has evolved to have representations and from various housing interests in central Vermont, such as Good Samaritan Haven, Vermont Interfaith Action, Habitat for Humanity, Montpelier Housing Authority, Downstreet, et cetera. So, and then, then just some interested citizens. I have to say that Montpelier is facing a very tight housing market, even though I think the city has done a lot and, and, and focused on this for quite a while. I think some of the challenges that we have might be similar to ones that you face in Berry. I don't know your city well, but, you know, in central Vermont, we don't have a robust development community, unlike Tittenham County. We're really dependent on Downstreet for development of affordable housing and they're busy and they work in a lot of towns. And so they can't always pay attention to us or you or whatever. And we also lack a lot of large buildable parcels. And much of the city is even either in the floodplain or on steep slopes. But I thought I would just go through three key things that Montpelier has done and that our housing committee has helped to initiate or, or advocate for. I'm not going to go through, through the whole list, but one thing that I think is key is the city of Montpelier has a paid position in City Hall, the community development specialist who focuses on housing and community development. And he or she reports to the director of planning. And a number of years ago, what, during tight budget times, there was a proposal to eliminate that position. And one thing that our committee did is went to the budget hearings and fought to retain it. And I think it's, it's been enormous in moving things forward. We also have what I would now consider housing-friendly zoning. That's relatively recent. About three years ago, the city did a complete rewrite of its zoning and rightly increased the density to reflect what exists in existing neighborhoods and decrease some of the parking requirements. And although we haven't seen a lot of development since the new zoning, there is more interest than there was. And I think it's really laying the groundwork for potential new housing. Another thing that Montpelier did, and this was in two thousand and seven, was create a housing trust fund. And there was a petition that year on the town meeting ballot to use some general fund dollars to create a housing trust fund. We ran this campaign that we called One Cent for Housing because it added a penny to the tax rate. And it passed. And initially, it was down payment assistance for people who wanted to buy a home. Now it can be used for multifamily developments as well. And it was on the ballot for several years. It always passed overwhelmingly. And the support was so strong that the city decided to make it part of the annual budget. And the appropriations have really been, there's been a big range and it, it really depends on how, how the revenues are and who's on the council. But the annual appropriations have ranged from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. Of course, we've been advocating to, for the higher end and hopefully post-pandemic it might be possible.
Polly, you have access to present now.
Okay, I think I'll just, I'll just keep doing it verbally since I'm, I'm kind of launched. I don't have any charts or graphs. You would just be, be looking at my notes. And we, we have some other ideas besides general fund for how it could be funded that we did propose. None of them have been adopted. Some would involve a charter change, for example. One of the ideas we proposed was a surcharge on property transfers over a certain amount, like four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. And anyway, so as of now, it is general fund money. The housing trust fund has been great leverage for state and federal grants. We estimate that that leverage has resulted in approximately nine million dollars being added to the city's grand list. I think some of it is, I don't know if psychological is the right word, but, you know, when, when the city or somebody like Downstreet goes in with an application for a project, it's a very concrete way to show that the city of Montpelier is behind it because they're willing to, to put some money towards it. So I, I think it's, I think it's made those applications more competitive than they may, may have been otherwise. The trust funds governed by a set of guidelines. Our housing committee wrote the guidelines and the city council adopted the guidelines. And then the city council appoints an advisory committee that reviews applications once a year and makes recommendations to council and council makes the final decision. And it's, historically, it's been used to fund down payment assistance and multifamily housing, as I said. Down payment assistance is usually in the form of a loan that sits there, but when the house is repaid, it comes back into the trust fund and, and can be used for another household. And then the multifamily housing often gets, gets grants or if it's a low-income housing tax credit project, which is this crazy federal program, it gets characterized as a deferred loan, but it's, it acts like a grant. Our committee has worked on a whole slew of other things over, over the, the years because we've been around for more than two decades. We actually helped create a home share program in central Vermont. We helped create a program to focus on accessory dwelling units. At one point, we ran a housing awareness campaign, which consisted of, among other things, posters in downtown businesses and articles in the local paper, The Bridge. We have sponsored a citywide meeting on homelessness. At one time, we had a breakfast with local employers and business owners to talk about housing and, and the needs of their employees. And I could go on and on. Just one other thing that I thought I wouldn't mention because one of the counselors brought it up. The city of Montpelier does have a grant to encourage accessory dwelling units. And this is the second time that the city has sponsored such a program. And unfortunately, both times, the source of funding was federal community development block grant funds that come through the state. And there just are too many strings attached for a program where you're not, you're not giving out a lot of money and to have to do a full-fledged environmental review or whatever that comes with federal funds, it's just, it's very cumbersome. So I would just say it's a good program. I think it can make a difference as household sizes are getting smaller and we have a lot of, and I assume you do too, single people or couples living in big houses. But I would encourage you to find another source of funds if that's something you want to consider.
Polly.
Is, is there a question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I don't. I don't have audio in here, so trying to see where I'm reverberating.
So Representative Anthony, do, do you have a question or your, your hand is raised?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to point out for our audience, including the city council, because I, I certainly go back this far. At the time, Michael Welch was manager of the city of Berry, which was quite a few years ago, thirty, I think. We developed the institutional capacity to do much of what you just described. And we had what was then called Berry Neighborhood Housing Authority. And we were the direct grant recipients for several of those programs. And I just wanted to confirm what you pointed out. And by contrast, we have left or allowed in the city of Berry the institutional capacity to undertake the kinds of things you're talking about. It's withered over the last twenty-five, thirty years. And so Berry Neighborhood Housing Services was absorbed by the Central Vermont Land Trust, which then became Downstreet. And as you pointed out, Downstreet is involved in a huge, huge geographic area. And so what once was an institutional capacity that focused specifically on the challenges in Berry has now become a regional entity, which has, with several exceptions, not a whole lot of focus on the particular problems in the city of Berry. That's unfortunate. And the question is, do we want the city of Berry to regrow that institutional capacity? But thank you, Polly, for pointing out the contrast between what you folks, folks have done in Montpelier and what we could do if we had the commitment here in Berry. Thanks.
So Polly, following up. Yeah, I'm going to try this, if you can still hear me. Following up on the statement that was just made, and what I was going to ask before was, how much money was initially put into the loan fund in order for Montpelier to kick off?
I think it was around twenty thousand dollars. It was so long ago, I don't, I don't remember for sure. And, and for many years, that, that was kind of the amount. We got it up to a hundred thousand a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic. And then you know what happened to municipal revenues when you aren't collecting as much for parking and, and all of that. So it did, it didn't, it wasn't as generously funded last year, but we're hoping at some point we can.
If you were to make a recommendation to us, it would be somewhere between twenty and a hundred thousand then for a program to start off?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't fund a project, especially an apartment project. I mean, those are multimillion-dollar projects, but it sends a message. And, and I think that's been really important. It, you know, and I think, as I said, I think it makes those applications much more competitive and it helps with down payments. I mean, we're in a situation in Montpelier now where it's gotten so expensive to buy a house there that, you know, we were, we were making fifteen thousand dollar down payment awards. And honestly, in this market, it's not enough. So it's recently, it's, it's been used more for multifamily developments.
Any questions from counsel? Counselor Hemmerich?
One quick question. Thank you, Polly. You said the nine million dollar enhancement to the grand list resulted from how much public investment?
Oh, I didn't say.
So nine million is a very impressive, because I, I, but I'm just curious, the scope of your budget, annual budget?
So, so this is over twenty-some years. I think it is something like seven hundred and fifty thousand in public investment.
Thank you.
Counselor Stockwell?
And the planning, the planning department has a dedicated development person who's an assistant to the planning director?
Yeah, they have a community development specialist. He writes a lot of grants and he administers some, you know, housing and economic development programs for the city. And he is staffed support to a number of city committees, including ours. So, you know, he helps us set up meetings and collect information. He does the minutes and it's, it's great to have that. One thing that you have in, in terms of development, going, going back to Representative Anthony's previous comment, you do have Granite City Housing, which was, I think it's still on the books. I don't know if they've done anything since Lincoln House, which was a long time ago. But, you know, it was, it was a development arm of the Berry Housing Authority that could do things besides public housing. And you know, I, I mean, I, I feel the same way about Montpelier. Montpelier, we have Capital City Housing, which is an offshoot of Montpelier Housing Authority. And maybe if Downstreet, you know, is, is focused on other communities as they need to, maybe kind of reinvigorating those very local entities might be, might be a tool that could be used. One of the questions that I was asked to address by email was about other communities with successful models. And I will say that although it's much bigger and it's a whole, whole different situation, I always look to Burlington for ideas because they've done a lot. And they've been, they've been struggling with, with the tight housing market for a number of years. There are other communities that have housing trust funds, not a lot. I know that the Town of Essex is in the process of considering developing one. There's a, a group in Brattleboro. There's a, a group in Brattleboro that is running uh, accessory dwelling unit program as volunteers. And so they don't get into the, the federal funds strings. Um. And, you know, so there, there are some other places um, to look uh, for ideas and, and for assistance. And um, I mean, I, when I, when I did the report to our city council this past summer, I did some research of what, you know, what are tools that municipalities can use? And Montpelier has, has done a number of those, but I, I'd be happy to share that list with you if you want it. I'd be happy to share our um, housing trust fund guidelines if you'd like them. Um, you know, I could share the list of the things that our housing committee um, has done over the years. So um, you know, just let me know um, how I can be helpful if, if you um, wanna move forward on something or continue the conversation. I'm, um, you know, I, I spent my professional career in affordable housing and I just can't seem to get away from it. So I, I really am happy to help.
Council member, did you hear, hear it up first?
Uh, sure. So uh, Polly, one, uh, another question I had was, it sounds like the Montpelier model is all about having it uh, housed within city government. You have a community development specialist, Kevin Casey, and, and he's working. Is he working full-time or part-time as a community development specialist?
I think it's, I think it's pretty much full-time. He may, he may only work four days a week for a while. He was working four days a week. But I don't know if that was just pandemic or.
And, and the fund is entirely with, it's on the city's books, but it's in a segregated uh, fund that is stewarded under the guidelines of the city by your three-member steering committee.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any reason not to have a larger revolving loan fund and to use it for a wider variety of housing opportunities? You know, like use it for people who want to create an ADU or use it for people who um, want to reduce some part of their house, it would make it more livable. So is there any reason not to do? Because Barry has a lot of housing that needs repair. So is there any reason not to do that?
No, no. And, and in our guidelines, um, we actually allow for some other uses like ADUs. There just hasn't been enough money. And, you know, we haven't wanted to go after um, state or federal money. Because then, you know, it, it just comes with, with so many, somewhat, you know, so many strings. Um. The, the city of Montpelier had a revolving loan fund for home repairs for a while. Um, it was funded by Department of Agriculture Rural Development. And it was for very low income households. And I think they, they finally decided um, to kind of merge it with Downstreet's revolving loan fund because they were, they were making law and servicing loans every day. And, you know, Montpelier would, would get an application. Um, not all that frequently. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I don't see any reason why you, you couldn't have.
Representative Anthony?
You know, because whatever your needs are. Um.
Peter, did you have a question?
I, I did. I just wanted to follow up on Polly's observation. One of the things that historically uh, used to get uh, considerable attention and play is what we now politely call deferred maintenance amongst single-family housing. Uh, as I think everybody knows, a lot of the owners occupants of single family uh, are not as wealthy as they once were thirty years ago. And the property reflects that. And yet, housing policy, and I understand why, has moved away from single family, whether it's upgrades, repairs, um, rehabilitation for resale and moved into multifamily. And that's where the money is, and that's where Downstreet is. But for the city of Barry, we have at least a, a third to forty percent of our population lives in single family. Many low income. And that housing stock is deteriorating year after year after year. And we want to have new owners come in and invest. And they look around and they say, oh, my goodness, this, this place, I could buy it for eighty thousand, but I'm gonna have to put a hundred into it. And so we're losing essentially turnover, uh, because it looks so daunting. Uh, because house, housing in the single-family market has gone on too long without necessary upgrades and repairs. Uh, I don't know if you have any advice for uh, the counselors on that score, but it's at least a, a, a third to half of our housing market. Uh, plenty of money for, for tenants and landlords, but not so much for single family. Uh, but thank you very much, Polly, for uh, giving us advice.
So Polly, do you have any response for that?
Well, I, I think you, you know, you need to focus on, on what your needs are. Um, but he's right. It, that's not where the, that's not where the big money is. Um, you know, I think you could still maybe get money um, from the state through the community development program. But then you do have all their rules, you would run into what Montpelier ran into with the accessory dwelling unit program. And, and, you know, there's income requirements and, and all of that, but um. Yeah, I, I mean, if you can, if you can fund it yourself, um, you have the most flexibility and, and you can be nimble and you can, you can meet your needs. But I, I agree, those, those kind of loans and grants make a, make a huge difference. I have, I have somebody in my family, um, who got one from the city who's, you know, very low income, disabled, and it just made an enormous difference. So.
Carol, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, to say, you know, the council made a step in that direction recently with the changes to the tax stabilization agreement policy um, that allows uh, um, single-family homes to be considered.
Um, and just to note, we have to bring that back for adoption. That's something that we made those comments on, but we haven't yet adopted in place yet. Sarah Helman?
Uh, thanks. I um, I deal a lot with housing. I, I work in community mental health. Um, and a lot of our folks are faced with homelessness or um, you know, don't have the means to, to rent some of the apartments that are available. Um, and I'm wondering if there's anything that the council can do to encourage um, private landlords to um, be more open to um, the low-income community. Um, I know it comes, there's been a precedent set by, you know, a small majority, but, or a small few, but the majority of, of low-income folks are, are really great renters.
So I think your question is about uh, ensuring that there would not be discrimination about those that are in a low-income category in order to be in those locations, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Um, so I mean, if there is, if there is discrimination, those are things that um, should be addressed. I don't think that's a part of this conversation tonight, but uh, it is something that we would have to look into. Are there any, oh, Council member?
Yeah, and then if I recall, on our tax stabilization policy, we did talk about um, integrating some affordability requirements for uh, developments that would uh, benefit or multifamily developments that would benefit from that. And just hearing, talking about ADUs, it's kind of triggering a thought to me, uh, for me about the tax stabilization policy that maybe there should be some opportunities to think about ADUs. And, and one more question from Polly on the lessons learned from your ADU program. It sounded like trying to use that federal money was qu- quite a bear. Um, and some of the things I've heard is that if you have a cash-strapped, single-family homeowner um, that doesn't have equity, then there's really no loan products out there on the market right now uh, for somebody that wants to do an accessory dwelling in it, but can't get the, the appraisal um, to do, say, an internal conversion or a backyard cottage in, in-law suite. Um, have you found some of those um, financing gaps? And, and did you get a, a support from the Vermont State Housing Authority uh, for that program?
Yeah, um, and I, you know, I, I don't administer the program. I had hoped that um, you know, Kevin Casey would have been able to join me tonight because he could give you a lot more detail. But yeah, um, it's, you know, the city of Montpelier applied and the Vermont State Housing Authority is, is pretty much administering it. And, you know, finally, all the, all the money's out the door. But um, as you said, it's, it's been a bear and I think it's, it's, it's been a lesson. It's just not a good match, but a much-needed program and a really good idea. And it also doesn't run into, um, you know, at neighborhood opposition, which we have a lot of in Montpelier, unfortunately, anytime anyone wants to build anything. So, um, it's, it's worth pursuing and it's worth figuring out.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Polly, I want to say thank you for coming in. It's been very informative. Um, there, there are two counselors and myself that have been working on housing-type projects. And I think the information that you provided will, will help with that discussion. So I thank you again for coming in and I'm sure we'll reach out if we have more questions.
Okay, you're very welcome. Good luck.
Thanks very much.
Bye.
Very hopeful. Hey, council. So if I'm following correctly, we're at item nine D. Uh, this is the discussion or, and/or action on the ARPA funding request from Downstreet Recovery Residents. And it has Michelle Percy here. Um, I think I see Michelle and I do see Nicola. So you're both here, whichever one wants to start us off.
Sure, I'll start us off. So uh, Downstreet Housing and Community Development has been working to develop a recovery residence in Barry City, specifically geared towards women with dependent children. Um, it will be only the second uh, recovery residence of its kind in the state of Vermont. There's only one other that serves women with dependent children in the state. Um, and so we are really far along in the funding for the project. Um, but recently have gotten some updated cost estimates uh, which have increased the cost of construction by a total of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we are approaching the city to see if it would be possible for um, the city to consider allocating some of the ARPA funds that are coming uh, into the municipality for use on this project. Um, and there should be a write-up in your package about the, the project. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just to start us off, um, you don't need any action tonight. You're just, you have a request. It's before us. Um, and uh, something that council, we, we're looking to have more public conversation anyway for ARPA funds and how they're to be used. So this is a request and I, I'm taking this as the type of request that we may start seeing come in from the, the public that we're going to either need to um, act on or have a way to address. Because uh, we did have one that uh, the homelessness task force came in and had a request. And, and now this is one from a uh, nonprofit that is coming in for a request. Um, so for tonight, I wanted to make sure that council was aware that if they do not feel comfortable uh, making an action tonight, uh, we can defer action, but to ask questions because this will help us in those conversations later about how to use those ARPA funds. Council staff.
Where are you within process? How close are you to opening?
I can only one, she go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm Nicola Anderson. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development. So just wanted to say, I've been working on this project. Um, really Downstreet's been working on this project since two thousand seventeen, but I've been working on this since two thousand nineteen. And I figure it's so timely to hear Polly Nichols tonight talk about housing and how, what Montpelier is addressing. And fortunately, Downstreet's here tonight to talk about two projects of the opportunity to bring housing to Barry City. New units and more housing opportunities to Barry City. Um, so we are hoping to close in this project so that we can start construction. So we are here asking for money so that we can bridge this gap, so that we can close the end of this year. You know, we know that um, obviously you might not feel comfortable acting on this um, today. Totally understand that, but we are still at a gap. And that's what, so we, our goal is to close um, this year. That means that we will start construction March one. Um, and then if we're saying it's probably gonna be about a seven-month construction. So with this, this home would be open fall twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Yeah.
So the other question was, I think, what is the gap amount? Uh, how much more are you looking for to fill?
Do you have that lined out, Michelle?
Yeah.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
And that number actually has shifted. Um, we got an updated estimate um, about a week ago that added what, another hundred and?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Thousand. So our total gap right now is at, let me pull it up, uh, two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
So this isn't accurate?
Correct. The, the numbers changed over the Thanksgiving break.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, we are just with the, trying our hardest to close where, and the, the struggle of construction at this time with the price of goods, but also um, the price of labor. Um, projects, like pricing comes in, it's different every single day. Unfortunately, and our gap is increasing and increasing as the days go on. So that's why the, the estimate has changed.
Yeah, and our goal is to close on this as soon as possible so that we won't continue to see those increases in costs. Um, because as soon as we can lock in those prices, um, the, the more stable costs will be for us.
Councilor, was it that? Did you want to finish her?
So, so really, you're probably gonna be looking at more of a gap rather than less.
Possibly, yes. You know, we actually, so we even, I just let you know, we went out to bid for construction. That's how far along, you know, we're, we're down to the wire in closing. So our construction manager went out to bid. So we are hoping to lock in those prices in the next week. That um, help, that's gonna help us. So we've gotten the numbers that we have gotten right now, that is the closest. We feel ho- hopeful that these are not gonna change further unless a subcontractor comes to us and says, hey, suddenly we have this super-long lead time or we need to pay an extra a hundred thousand dollars to get this now. Which unfortunately, that's really common in the construction climate that is right now. Um, but we feel good that this price is not gonna change much. Um, if it will be, it would be within ten thousand dollars. I would expect that this would change. But feel confident in these numbers at this time.
Councilor, was it that?
Yeah, so I would, um, excuse me. So acknowledging the new numbers that came in over the Thanksgiving holiday, uh, would the sixty thousand that you're asking us for allow you to close? Like, like, why are you requesting specifically? And I don't mean to, you know, nay-nay the request. I'm just asking, how did you guys come up with specifically a sixty thousand dollar request for us?
So the sixty thousand dollar request um, was one that uh, came. We actually started to pull the numbers together several months ago. We've been fundraising aggressively for this project since August as we saw the prices increase. Um, and as soon as we would fill a gap with some fundraising, a new gap would open up. So we're, we've been kind of trying to play catch-up with this. And so that sixty thousand dollar gap was based on the numbers that we had prior to the, the most recent cost estimate going up. Um, and we felt that the sixty thousand dollars in addition to the fundraising that we're doing on our own um, would close the gap in time for closing.
So then the follow-up question, and the mayor kind of alluded to this, would be when are you waiting on the sixty thousand to be able to close?
To be honest, this is a tricky question because it really depends on our funders. I'm, knowing that we are gonna receive the sixty thousand would get us to closing quicker, I believe. I, like, they're wanting to know this, this would help us close quicker and probably guarantee a closing to happen. If we were to, if we were to push this off another month, I can't say for sure that we would close this year.
So I'll give a more pointed question. So if, say, we had this as an item on uh, our twenty-first council meeting. I would, we'd have time for council to have more conversation on the ARPA funds, their usage and a process to apply through. Do you think that the twenty-first is still an okay meeting for us to make a decision on? Do you think that the 21st is still an okay meeting for us to make a decision on that?
No, we, I think having, I think saying to the funders that, hey, we've, we've approached this, we're going to see action on the 21st. I think that that is a good faith for the funders. I do believe that. I don't, I don't want to be here today and say, put you down to the wire. I want to make sure that the Berry City Council feels comfortable, come, come, comfortable and confident in the decision making and creating policies for future. Because I agree with you, you're going to get more requests.
So, and I just want to put a disclaimer out there. So I don't want to say anything on behalf of council that there is actually money that would be expended. That's a discussion that would still need to happen on the 21st. But if, unless council takes action tonight, wants to. The other question I had related to that is, I did see another email because it is giving Tuesday. And it looks like there is a match available out there. So if council was to do something between now and the end of the year, it looks like that money could be matched at whatever level we were able to provide.
The match that's been offered currently is for a maximum of $10,000. And I believe as of this evening, we've already met half of that requirement. So it depends on what happens with the rest of our fundraising.
That's great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but thanks for bringing that up. And, um, yeah, and
Peter?
Yeah, thank you very much and thank you very much for moving ahead with this project. It's much needed. It is, however, a regional asset. And I guess my question, coming late to the party is, will this property remain on the tax rolls even if it's stabilized to reflect its current value, notwithstanding the amount of money you're going to pump into it?
So regarding the taxes with, this will be an affordable housing property. So the taxes will be calculated. However, we're putting 1.9 million dollars worth of work into this building. So I can see when this building is reassessed, that taxes will increase from what the current tax rule is. You know, I don't know that full calculation, but we will pay, you know, the taxes with the tax calculation there. And, you know, fortunate, you know, with this project, we're taking a vacant building and placing six families in with housing, with putting 1.9 million dollar worth of work into this building. You know, we are providing many families the opportunity for housing over time. And, you know, also, you know, just the, the type of building that the state, the state that this building is in currently, you know, we're going to get a much better product from this project.
And a related question.
If I may.
It is a regional asset. It's, this is a request for ARPA funds from Berry City. But have you also reached out to other municipalities to see if they would be willing to chip in from their funds that they have received?
We have not since this project is being housed in Berry City. And it's, it's, while it's a regional resource, people who apply to be part of recovery residence programming can, they apply through the Vermont Foundation of Recovery for this particular house, which identifies who the applicants are, sees if they are a good fit for recovery housing, and then finds the most appropriate location for them in the state, giving precedent to, you know, what the best fit is. So there was a study that was done by Downstreet back in 2019 that identified the need for recovery residents in central Vermont, specifically in Berry, to serve women with dependent children. Because right now, the large majority of recovery residences are located either in Chittenden County or in Brattleboro, and they serve the entire state.
Peter, did you have another question?
I, I just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. It just happens, for those of you on the council or the mayor who were around when the Downstreet project on Summer Street evolved, there was one understanding about being taxable, which morphed into something rather different. And I don't want to go into the gory details, but it is true that there is a statutory formula, which essentially Downstreet availed itself from, of, which significantly decreases the assessable value under the rubric of affordable housing. And my point is that Berry has been, have I say generous in respect to being a regional asset. And unfortunately, we are paying a relatively heavy price. That is to say, we have amongst the highest tax rate in the region. And it's because the grand list won't grow. And it's not that there isn't a lot of building, it's the grand list won't grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't agree more with Representative Anthony in that, you know, we, the city is, is paying for tremendous regional needs, not only for, for, on the grand list for certain affordability measures, but also for our transportation system. And, and I know we had talked over the summer that we were going to have a really robust public participation process and prioritization process to think about where, how, how will this, how will this pot of money be allocated in the most strategic way? I think we made a good decision on the immediate needs to address winter homelessness last week and working in partnership with the library. But, but I do think we need to, to have that robust process and conversation and to be really fair about the way that these requests come in and have a clear process in certain, certain bench, benchmarks that need to be met. So I would not be comfortable approving that this, I think it jumps the gun on that process and may do so even on the 21st. As, as valuable as an asset as I think this could be. And certainly, we supported the community development block grant application. And, uh, and, and, and I think council supports the project. But, but we do need to be really strategic about how we spend that money, particularly as we face down millions of dollars of infrastructure maintenance needs. It's sobering the amount of, uh, investment that's needed in the city's own physical plant just to maintain private activities that happen outside the right of way. And I think that's, that's a, that's a serious consideration for this, for me, and I hope this council.
So councillor Booton and then Steve and then councillor Woz.
I agree with that, that statement. You know, I, 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 Representative Peter Anthony brought up the, the, the Summer Street project. And, and I remember, and I, I said it the last time you guys were here. I remember that conversation specifically asking about that. And I was a little disappointed what happened. Um, you know, I would like to see the numbers of how much it's going to be adding to the grand list. And, and I would absolutely agree with councillor Hemrick on the fact that I think it's a little too early for us to start moving down this road with, personally, with any requests at this moment. We just, there is a lot of needs out there for the city and infrastructure that, you know, we have that is getting older. And yeah, we're maintaining it, but we're not really able to afford the upgrades of that infrastructure. And the ARPA funds is a, is a really good place to, to do those upgrades that are needed. And, um, and I, and I would also agree with councillor Hemrick that I don't know if the 21st would be, you know, within that timeframe as well.
Steve, we had you next, and then councillor Woz, Zach, and then Michelle.
Yeah, um, just to let the councillors know, I have on the draft agenda for the 14th a, a discussion item to do exactly what you've been talking about is to refocus on, um, the ARPA project solicitation, public solicitation, decision making process. So that will be coming up very quickly.
So I agree with a good chunk of what's already been said. I do think it's very important that we have a fair and straightforward process for organizations, for committees, for whomever to make recommendations to the city on how to most responsibly spend the 2.3 million dollars that we've been allocated. But I do want to put some context around that in that, let's just say, I'm not proposing this, but let's just say we were to pass the $60,000 right now. That plus the $20,000 that we've given to the Aldrich for the warming shelter is $80,000 or 0.03% of the total money that we have available to us for, from ARPA. And I could not agree more. One of the reasons I ran for council in the first place is that I wanted to see good strategic, long-term investments in some of our outstanding infrastructure needs, DPW complex, roads, more equipment for sidewalk repair, et cetera. And I understand the need for good and responsible and consistent policy and procedure. However, I don't think that we should let policy and procedure get in the way of helping people. And I think that there is a very clear and obvious need in central Vermont for a project like this. Now, I would strongly recommend to Michelle, and I'm so sorry, I'm forgetting the second individual's name.
Nicola.
Nicole, I would, I would strongly recommend that you guys go to Montpelier, Berrytown, Berlin with similar requests to help make up that quarter million dollar gap that you all just identified. I, I think that we will, Representative Anthony was right in that this would, though I'm sure Berry individuals would get the first dip at this, there would be individuals from surrounding communities that would utilize this resource. That's just always how it happens in Berry, that's just a fact. So I think that it would be totally appropriate for y'all to go solicit ARPA funding from other municipalities. And I think that would make it an easier sell to the rest of the council. I am in complete support of this. And I think if that 60,000 can help you guys close, we should do everything in our power to approve that by the 21st of December. You know, it, it, it sounds not as urgent as $20,000 to get people inside because it's snowing. But if they don't close by December, then they don't start building in March. And if they don't start building in March, it's not open by the end of 2022. So I just want us to keep in mind as we move forward that in my view, the main purpose of government and government funding is to help people. And this would be, this would go a long way towards helping a very vulnerable community in central Vermont.
Michelle and then Representative Anthony?
Yeah, I, I just want to respond to Representative Anthony's concerns about the, the taxation issue. And as Nicola did say, right now, the, the property itself is on the grand list, I'm sure, for about $100,000. And with the improvements, it's going to improve the value of the property and improve the, the value of the property for the entire community. But it also, I think, needs to be spoken to that this property is to help house people who are coming from homelessness, which is a priority for the city. And the cost of meeting the needs of people who are struggling with substance use disorder or struggling with homelessness also falls to the city. And so this is more of a preemptive investment in helping to provide solutions for the community. And so I wouldn't downplay the value of that to the city of Berry.
Thank you. Representative Anthony?
As much as I hate to point it out, and I, I, I am deeply respectful and grateful to Rick DeAngelis for taking over the Good Samaritan Haven. You may notice that he was not going to go forward in Berlin unless he signed an agreement, essentially that that would be on the rolls, even though statutorily it's exempt, the project to create an extension for, uh, of folks without a permanent address. I, 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 I am regretful that we've come to that. But unfortunately, there are too many people who want to use the city of Berry as sort of regional asset and complement us. But the problem is it doesn't add anything to the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking around at council. This might be another one of those items that maybe there's no action for tonight.
I would say no. I would agree.
Yeah, no action for tonight. And I would just say that, like, I would also like to see the updated gap numbers on the 21st. I would also like to see, you know, a ballpark of where the value of the property is going to go after all of the renovations. I still want to see those things and have those. I'm broadly in agreement with this proposal, but I do want to see that extra data, too.
Councillor Booton?
Follow up to what Representative Peter Anthony said. And, you know, why not have that conversation about, you know, whether or not we can have that fully taxed as part of the deal of the 60,000? But, anyway.
And, and just speaking for myself, I think trying to getting the yes would be much easier if there's a commitment from at least three other municipalities in, in, in central Vermont to this, to this project.
So I guess both Michelle and Nicola, if you take that information back, see if there is anything else that you can do for outreach for those other communities. Councillor Woz, Zach, I think that information is something that is shared by most of council just to make sure that we understand what the tax would look like if this project does come to fruition, which I think it will regardless of an action of council anyway. But if those funds are needed and you need it from all of our different communities because it is a community asset that supports multiple communities within our region, it'd be good to see that outreach and what the, the commitment is from others in the area. So with that, I don't think there's any other questions. It is getting late, it is 9:45. So I do want to thank you both for coming in. And we will schedule this back on the 21st unless there's anything that would make it move otherwise. So just so that you're aware for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you both. And councils, with that, we are at the point where we discussed the review and our acceptance of the five-year water wastewater enterprise fund budgets. It was noted that the budget sheets weren't included, but Bill is here. If you want to have an overview of that sheet that was there, if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
And Steve also has his hand up. So Bill, do you want to come on up here? And Steve, is there a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, it's just regarding the, the agenda. Item 3H off the consent agenda was, what was pulled off the consent agenda. And I think Nicole and or Michelle might be here to speak to that as well.
Very good point. So Bill, before you come on.
Thank you.
We did pull off 3H. So council, if you're not opposed, we'll address 3H first. This is the approval to apply for the VCBP implementation grant for Downstreet Rehabilitator projects. We do have two representatives that we were just talking with. And Janet is also here, which I believe Janet, you helped in that process. So if there's one of you that would like to speak directly to the item?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm here today to open up a implementation grant to submit, to apply for funding for our Granite City Apartments project. This is for the rehabilitation of Broomer, which is currently in our portfolio. Mostly exterior work, but also energy efficiency work and updating the mechanical system, including a buried oil tank that's been there for over 50 years. At Ward 5, we are really excited to take advantage of this school that has been vacant for over seven years. It previously was Berry Housing Authority's building and placing nine units in this building. This property will be designated for low income and extremely low income families. We also will be partnering with local service providers, be writing services to the residents. So this is to open an application to apply for funding. We plan to start applications, um, the winter and the first couple of months next year and starting construction late summer.
So Janet or Michelle, is there anything you wanted to add first? So you know?
No, thank you.
Counselor Booton?
So since you're talking about the Broomer Apartments, I'm going to bring up a complaint that I got about, about them. And I don't know if this is something that you can add into your rehabilitation, but the trash barrels are actually at an entry point to neighboring properties. And, and there has been some complaints.
Yeah, that's actually in our, thanks for bringing that up. That is in our scope of work. To that we are going to be changing the trash, trash locations. They are creating actual trash entries, making sure that there is that they're in a place that is making sure it's on our property. And that there's, they're not on the city right of way either.
I appreciate that. I'll be able to call the person up and let them know that it's going to happen. We'll be very happy.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nicole and Janet. I looked over the, the background memo and I noticed that one thing it said is that it, it's understood that if council approves this, that it should be behind the project as a whole. And so I was just curious to learn more about the project. And it sounds like it's, it also involves the Ward Five School and kind of implicates the same type of taxation discussion, at least for the Ward Five School as, as, as some of the other, other, other properties. And so I was just curious if we could get into the details of that. And if I remember right, the last time you came for the Ward Five School was to release some HUD covenants from Chicago. So I, I suspect that those are gone. And now you're, you're going to go in for VCDB funding. Will we see that application before it's submitted?
Yes. Sorry. So part of the public hearing, so we do a public hearing as part of the application submission. So I usually have this application completely completed for this for, for the public hearings. I can provide the narrative as part of the agenda item for the public hearing so that you can read through that if that would help. So we, so Berry Housing Authority are gifting this property to us, which is huge and greatly appreciated. Definitely, you know, lowers acquisition costs for us. So we, the reason, we've been going through the HUD process of this as part of the Berry Housing Authority covenants. We still, a part of the covenant of being gifted and part of our funding anyway is permanent affordability. So that is staying with the property, also really fortunate that we are applying to have project-based vouchers for each of the units at this property, which again, really difficult, but also makes the, the units more affordable to residents. And also just a lot, so that's, that's part of that HUD process that we've gone through with Berry Housing Authority. So yes, this, the, again, exactly, this is, you know, part of bringing in affordable housing and in order. So I think to, to help explain the, the part of the taxes and why there is this law statewide about the affordability of the taxes and changing this calculation. We also have to be able to afford to operate these buildings as well. You know, if we, so we're going to be, for example, the amount of work we're putting into this Ward Five building is over, it's going to be like three and a half million dollars worth of construction work, three and a half to four million dollars. This, if you were to walk through that building right now, you would see ceilings collapse, you would see an old steam boiler. You would see a building that has over $200,000 worth of asbestos. You would see a building that's covered in lead. The amount of work that we're going to put into this building, you know, brand new, but we're also going to keep the historic nature of this building. It is going to be a beautiful building. Like, I personally cannot wait for the grand opening and for you all to have the opportunity to walk through this. You know, we're going to keep the historic nature of the old classrooms. You're going to have that feeling, but it's also going to be a unit if someone is going to be living in these units. But in order for, the reason that there is this covenant regarding taxes is that we have to be able to afford to operate this. You know, the only income that we get is from the rents. And those rents, but that also is, that's paying for the services that we're providing. We were providing housing to homeless individuals. That's the maintenance cut work. That's all of the maintenance costs. That is repairs needed. That, that's part of that process. But again, like I mentioned earlier, we're putting over $4 million worth of work, three and a half to four million dollars worth of work into this project. That building is going to appraise at a higher value. We will pay more in taxes of what is being paid at this time.
So I see Peter and then Steve and then Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know, I think, both the Broomer property and Woodchuck Mall, Knoll, as it's commonly referred to, Ward Five, are hot water systems. Are you incorporating a wood chip boiler in either of those?
Yeah, so we're not actually, we initially were thinking of doing that at Broomer. But this is, to be honest, the, the amount of, that it was going to cost to update that system and underground piping at Broomer, there's two different buildings there. I'm sorry, I'm really getting into the weeds and the details. But there's two different buildings and the combining, the piping, the cost of that system was really going to be extremely high. We, because then the issue, so we're not doing that at Broomer. Then the issue, yeah, it's a steam boiler currently at Ward Five. Because of the historic nature, the size of those windows, you know, I really want to put air conditioning in to those units. I think that that's going to operate better for the residents. They're going to be much happier in the summer. So wood chip boiler is not the most efficient for year-round use.
Yeah, I just, I just want to go back to the, the action memo. You're, you're, the council's not being asked to approve a grant application this evening. It's really in an effort to be, I mean, informative to the council. What's being requested is authorization to open the application in the grant portal system at this time. So that Downstreet can start populating answers to the questions, uploading attachments accepted. It is not a request to submit the grant at this time. That will come as a formal request to actually apply for the grant in front of the city council in January of '22, when the required public hearing has to take place. So this is merely a request to get access to the grant system to prepare the grant application. This is not approval of submitting the grant application. And I'll defer to Janet or Nicola to correct me if I'm wrong in that.
They're nodding. Michael?
Yeah, so you're talking about remodeling Ward Five. So it'll be similar to what happened to North Berry School, is that correct?
Yes, I'm, to be honest, I don't know all the details of North Berry School.
Yeah, they, they also did that. They refurbished the, the, the classrooms and it, it kind of kept that old feel of really tall ceilings.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. So, because we're going to be, with our funding, we have to keep the historic nature and we have historic preservation are at very highly involved.
So we're looking at, because I think if I recall back from the previous conversation, you're looking at like one, two bedrooms, right?
We're going to have three two-bedrooms. So we're actually going to keep two of the classrooms the exact size, so they're not going to be split in half. So that there's a total of four classrooms in the building. So two of the classrooms will be kept as two bedrooms. So a classroom will be a two-bedroom unit.
Are there any other questions regarding this item?
There are motion needed?
There is. So the motion would be to approve the, apply for the VCDP implementation grant for Downstreet Rehabilitation Projects.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Wazak and by Counselor Reel. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. And Carol, just to note, so that is unanimous. Council moving on to, I think we're safe now to have Bill come on. You want to come up now? So this is item 9E. This is the review and/or acceptance of a five-year water equipment, sorry, water wastewater enterprise fund budget planning projection. Come on up.
Bill should get a bonus for starting a presentation.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor, and the obviously large group of interested public. What I'd, I'd like to do would be to kind of walk through some of the budget in, in a conceptual manner rather than in detail, given the time. And I prefer, if it worked out with you folks, for me to actually take a look at the looking for the water department budget first. So generally, what you would see, folks, is an application of a small inflationary increase over time. You'd see that the revenues themselves are projected to increase in a reasonably stable manner. The, the biggest differences in this budget from prior years is actually that we're proposing, because we had an increasing fund balance, to make a conscious effort to develop more capital value in the water system. We're talking about approximately a half million dollars per year from fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '27. We have a, a brief summary of those projects that we will try to put out to the public tomorrow. So they'll be available before the budget discussion this weekend. But in essence, the, the water rates are satisfactory for us to start taking on some of the major deficiencies. So the first five years, spending that half million per year will allow us to take care of about 30% of the four-inch water mains in the city. And four-inch water mains are one of our targets because they don't support good fire protection response. So the state's current recommendation is eight-inch minimum pipe sizes. So in those, in those areas that we're proposing to go into, that eight-inch pipe will deliver about three and a half times more water than the four-inch pipe. So in the event of a, a fire response, they're dramatically better. So we, 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 that's one of the single biggest changes here in this budget. There are other smaller changes that we've made at the plant that affected our chemical usage slightly. We've addressed the increases in energy costs that we anticipate. And again, that's another area that right now we see unfortunately being a, a growth area rather than something that's stable. So that's, that is the three-minute overview. And before I move to wastewater, what I'd like to do would be to ask if there were any questions about a specific element of the budget for an area that you'd like to hear more about.
Counselor Wazak?
I was looking at the overall memo, and under key assumptions that were made in the attached projection, you have kept Berrytown revenue level funded for all of the years. Is that just because we don't know how much there may be a little increase, a little decrease, and we're just going to keep it level funded? Or how does that work?
So, so when we looked at those revenues, and, and Dawn can probably speak to this a little more clearly about the percentage change. We don't see any major change in, in growth in Berrytown that would alter that. It is, th- this budget is silent to whether or not the city and the town will renegotiate any rates. One of the things that, that the city is doing in its development of a capital program is it's concentrating on the city. And, and again, that may be something if the town is interested in either contributing to or paying more, that emphasis could move slightly from the city to include the town. But at this point, everything in our five-year capital budget is inside the city limits.
I'm sure the town would be thrilled to hear that.
Mr. Mayor?
On, on that same, same line of thinking, so the assumption is, is that there's not going to be much growth in the town. But certainly, every, everything's going up in the city. And it, and when you look at the development numbers, there is much more growth happening in the town than there is in the city. So, so if, if, if there's less growth, and if the assumption is, is that we shouldn't increase any rates in the town because they're not growing, but, and, but they're growing more than we are in the city and we're paying more, I don't, I don't follow the logic.
So I, I think the best answer that I could give you right now is I need to go back and look at this. Because in fact, the town is, town's growth rate is higher than the city's. And we can raise the projected revenue from the town based on that. Our intention wasn't to, in effect, lower the rates for the town. In fact, we're, we're in an intermunicipal agreement that says the rates in the town will be the same as in the city. So if the town grows, we should be projecting more revenue from them. And that's, that's something that I can go back and, and work with Dawn and make that correction.
So just to note on that, too, I think part of the conversations we've had, too, is to revisit those agreements. So in one instance, we're going to be looking at that to make a correction to say that they'll go up at the same rate because that's what the current agreement says. But there'll need to be a conversation with Berrytown on, just think about the amount of overtime that might be needed whenever there's an incident at one of our facilities and there's added costs. That's something that's being borne on directly by the fund overall. But we need to make sure that, that being paid for equally amongst the, the users.
Dawn had her hand up and then counsel.
Okay, thank you, sir. So Dawn, did you want to add in?
Yeah, I just want to maybe clear up a little confusion here in my, my note. The
One second, Dawn. Go ahead. There you go.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to clear up some confusion that could possibly came from the key assumption note that I had made about keeping Berrytown revenue level funded. That is for the sewer fund only. And we were talking about the water rate. So if any water revenue increase to Berrytown would see that 4% increase. Excuse me, the sewer was projected to be level funded because that is a very complex formula driven by the expenditures in the sewer plant and the BOD and flow rates, if I got that correct. So that was just an assumption that was made at that time, because if we go under new negotiations, that can, can totally skew that number. So I kept that baseline of where we are currently. If that kind of clears up confusion, or did I just add more to it?
Yes.
I think you added more, too.
Sorry.
So that, that's very helpful. I can thank you, Dawn, because the, the fact of the matter is that the sewage rate is one that I would advise the council, we will be working actively on. Because there are Berrytown businesses that are directly contributing to the issues that we have at the wastewater plant. And, and the current assumptions that were used to build that rate structure, I, I hope to change dramatically and in a manner that will increase the town's contribution. The, the town is really carrying the, the bulk of the, the load that causes costs at the plant. So, so rather than trying to get into that in a budget sense, we were just projecting it at the same rates with the increases that the council has authorized for the sewer, sewer use rate.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, and there's some additional confusions with Berrytown as well, because we got our direct bill folks and we also have the, the Berrytown that we actually have the contract with. And they also have their own water system as well that, you know, I don't know if they've been expanding it lately. But I do know that when there was But I do know that when there was some issues a couple of years ago, they started talking about expanding their water system. So just additional information for those that may not know.
Thank you. Councilor Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor. And so for the 500,000 annual capital investment or capital value enhancement, where does that appear in the budget? I saw a 750 annual allocation for water main replacement. And I was curious, how does that type of a capital investment break out between between the city and the town in terms of locations of those investments?
So I misspoke earlier when I said 500,000 because that is the correct line. And ultimately, what happened between one of the initial drafts and this one was there was a determination that number should come up. So I will go back and edit my five-year plan to increase to $750,000. And that is the line that you would see. The water main replacement program allowance is exactly that number, but it is 750,000.
And is it oldest, so four-inch and oldest pipe first?
It is targeted at four-inch first. And that's the bulk of the first five years of the program. There are going to be some valve replacements that will begin to roll out in future years. But right now, the city's never had a valve turning program. So we find a bad valve when we can't shut it off. And what we need to do is operate a valve turning program, locate them, and then program their replacement. But I don't have that data now. So right now, we're building the initial estimates on a four-inch water main replacement program. I have a list from April of 2021 that lists some 70 targeted areas for capital investment within DPW. And in the water area, four-inch mains, the second level is hydrant density. The city doesn't have uniform hydrant density. So we have places where we have both four-inch pipe and hydrant densities that are near 1,000 feet. And so from a fire protection perspective, we'd like to make those numbers smaller. And until we actually look at our hydrant distribution, again, so those are in-out years. And for this year, what we're showing is a projected, we can consume that 750,000. This is what it would do in four-inch mains. And as we go forward, we'll add an element for general network improvement. So if I've got a six-inch where I should have a 12-inch, we would replace that. We'd look at hydrant densities. And then beyond that, we actually want to start looking at improving the quality of the network. So when you have a dead-end pipe, when we flush the pipe, that's the one, once of two times per year that you actually clean that pipe. Otherwise, it sits and literally you pull three or 400 gallons a day through a container that holds 1,000. And so the age of the water in the pipe is literally old. Those are network improvements. So I'll supply you that list. I can actually get that to the manager for his release this week, again, before the budget discussion. So you can kind of get a sense of what's out there for upcoming need, what this program is targeted at doing, and what this program doesn't touch for needs. As we get into future years, we'll have better information if we can change how the program distributes that available capital.
High five for that, huge high five for that. Just one other question on the water. What's line 151 depreciation expense? What does that mean?
So I'm actually going to ask Dawn to respond to that because it's an accounting function and she can answer it better than I.
Sure, when we bring on assets online, they have a useful life and a depreciation value. And so that's just spreading.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry, that's the useful life of an asset for the spread out for the financial statements over the useful life.
It's accounting.
Yeah, it's the accounting function. And it's because otherwise, like the general fund, you see your capital expenditures come out of your general fund. The water and sewer are business-based financials. So those actually come out of off your balance sheet. And so this is a way to account for them slower over time.
So literally, the asset is depreciated because as it ages, it loses value. And so if I build a 40-year water plant, in the 40th year theoretically, it's used up its value. So that's where the depreciation numbers come from. But it's a number that's founded on the overall system. So we have pipes that are 130 that really are well-depreciated and beyond that. And then we have pieces of the system that are still new enough that they would have capital value. So the assets reduce in value because they age. And at the same time, that is kind of a real function. But accounting-wise, each asset is given a protected life. And then we calculate what its reduced value is across that life.
So and this is going to be a question for Dawn. But Dawn, we're going to see some of that information when we receive the audit back. So councilors can be aware of how that's accounted for, correct?
Correct, yep.
And I believe that's still scheduled for December 14th as well, something like that?
It is, yes.
Dawn, I thought.
On that, and that, so we have, you know, a line for vehicle fuel. And it seems like, you know, there's money flowing for there. And when you're and when there's a depreciating asset and it's tracked in a table, this isn't actually money moving into a capital investment because it looks like it's $305,000 that's right onto the total expenditure budget. But is it real, like, we're not being an accountant.
It's not a cash.
Moving into a into an expense?
So it's a value, and I'll let Dawn speak to that in more depth.
That's exactly it. It's a non-cash transaction. It's just allocating it over its useful life, an X-value over all the assets useful life that is recorded. There's no cash transfer. There's nothing other than a paper entry to get the useful life to your income statement. So you have at the end of the fiscal year, you have a value of what you're, in this case, your water department is valued at. Because the assets that you've bought, you still have useful life left.
So your assets plus your liabilities equal your owner equity? That's the accounting side of it. So, Bill, I just wanted to say thank you. I think you had a second piece of this that you wanted to present.
So then I would like to go over the sewer budget briefly and do it in a similar manner. In this case, the budget again mirrors prior years. It does have an increase. One of the differences that is on the revenue side, you'll see that in the out years. So we had a resolution that addressed the revenue and the rate changes through FY '23. And you'll see that we altered the revenue increases in those out years back to where we think inflation will be. And so that number is sitting at 4% across FY '24, '25, and '26. So our target was basically to stay current with what we anticipated inflation to be and not necessarily to try to improve our financial position. And basically, the budget, other than that, has changed by we're trying to mimic that same effort that we're doing in the water, where we have projects to address problem areas. Within the sewer department, that number is limited to $50,000 per year. And just because the revenues won't support more than that, I can tell you that we have much more than that that we could be doing. But basically, this is matching the level of effort with the revenues that we can reliably project. And at this point, we're not projecting the 20% increase on the operating portion. And that's reflected in those reduced revenues in '24, '25, '26, and '27. So very similar. Though no substantial changes either in the items themselves or in the amounts. And some inflation-based adjustments going forward on costs and revenues were protected. So I'd like to say it's a boring budget for you to look at.
So any other questions on that?
Just on the sewer, so this FY '23 is the last year of the 20% sewer increases. But the projected revenue shows a
So this is important because the 20% is only on the usage.
Yeah.
And the base is the 4%. And so depending on usage, it ranges. And that's the kind of the
Yeah, and just one question before I let Steve respond is there was another agenda item on here for bond projects. So the money that you're looking at right now is different than a pot of money that is allocated to bonds, which also could apply to water and sewer projects. So
And some of those projects, too, you're absolutely right.
Right, so when we have our budget conversation on Saturday, just be aware that there's the general fund budget, there's bond allocation, there are articles that we place for streets and sidewalks. And those are all different buckets. And then when we go for grants, those are also other funding sources. So we just need to make sure that we understand that these are all the makeups of what could end up being five different funding sources for one project for the city. Call it a DPW, right? Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would be looking for the council to move to accept the budget, the water and wastewater enterprise budget presentations. That, as I said, or we said in the cover memo, these are not cast in concrete. These are really just baseline planning documents. They need to be looked at every year, annually going forward. But these are good foundation documents for monitoring and managing revenues and expenses going forward. I would appreciate acknowledgement by the council that or acceptance of the budgets as presented.
So what I'm going to make as a recommendation is that because there were some figures that need to be updated, that we update those figures places on the consent agenda for next week in that they can be approved that way. We've had the discussion, we understand those pieces. We can update it so that they're up to date. And if there's any other questions that come up at that point, we could always pull it. But I'd rather us, you know, at least have that other look at it just in case.
Yeah, that's fine, Mayor.
The only other thing that I'd offer is that we're not looking for approval. We're looking for acceptance because it's a planning document. And I've been telling my own staff this same thing is that every year, the council looks at and formally approves the actions that are planned for that year. But as I have all these different buckets that I'm going to reach into, I'm certain that the things that we're reaching for are going to be refined each year in that annual budget. And that's where we would be seeking your approval.
So is that fine with council if we have it for? So with that, we do have one other item that we had pulled from the consent agenda. So Bill, item 3H. Authorized consultant selection for the 20-year wastewater treatment facility upgrade evaluation?
Yes. I came prepared, actually, to talk to that and to explain the parts that I thought might have been obtuse in this. And so one of them was scoring and rating and the difference. And why, as we looked at the five consultants that provided answers and offered quotations, we would look at them that way. And literally, they're just two different lenses to look at their answers. The rating system was done on the basis of 1 to 5 by the five criteria that we used. And so each participant on the selection panel essentially rated all five of the offerings by each of the criteria that we had selected. And I think I labeled those five criteria here. The capacity of the firm to deliver the work was weighted at 20% of the score. The capability of the team, the people that were actually pledged to work on our project, was 30% of the team of the score. The responsiveness of the proposal. So had they paid attention to what we've asked for? Had they put in some effort in developing a proposal? And had they actually had any particular insights about the project we were asking them to do? Their direct experience with the type of activated sludge process we have. So there are five or six different particular types of activated sludge. We have one of them. And we wanted to make sure that whoever we select for this understood the unique characteristics of what we operate. That was 15%. And lastly, because this is related to the notice of alleged violation for the total ammonia nitrogen, their ability to expedite the work. Interestingly, the scoring, three of the four team members did full scoring, one did ratings. And whether we used scores, and I have a summary sheet that I can tell you that the number one consultant on a scoring basis had an 82.67. The number two had a 78. The number three was 71. And so the top two firms came out in scoring as being the ones that we asked you to allow us to consider an award to. On a rating basis, because they were on 1 to 5, the top firm came out at 1.8. The second firm came out at 2.85. Again, the same two firms in the same order. And the third value in the rating process was three, suggesting that the second and third offers were more similarly in character. The disadvantage of the rating is that it wasn't weighted. It took all five factors and took the weighting that we put on them and removed it. And so it was not as refined as the scoring process. The fact that both yield the same first two, I thought, was encouraging. And I would tell you that generally, the scorings were all within 10% with one exception. And the exception was on something that I thought we'd all agree on. And that was the experience assessment on oxidation canals. But every team member used a different way of looking at that, ranging from cited experience and history to the number of people who they referenced as being on the team that had direct experience. And so literally, the team looked at it differently. And on that one, we actually had a variance that was closer to 20% in our scoring. But overall, the scoring was very clear. The reason that we are asking, rather than saying, let's just take the first highest value, is because one of the characteristics of this is we can either be a small project in a big firm with exceptional technical experience. Or we can be an important project to a smaller firm that has good technical skill. But we need to assess some of the factors. So some of the questions that we want to ask in the interview are, how will you recover if one of your team members is struck with COVID? How will you actually access expertise for those areas that you don't have in your current office? So for the large firm, we're certain that they're going to say, well, we're going to call Medford or we'll call Gainesville. For the small firm, we want to hear what their process for selecting that expert is. When it comes to expediting this project for a small firm, When it comes to expediting this project for a small firm where we are a large portion of their current workload, we know that we'll get a response. For a large firm that we're one of a thousand projects, we will get some response from the team leader. But we're not certain that the guy in Gainesville is going to answer the phone. And so we want to be able to actually interview them, pose questions that force them to answer what their current practices are, and then use the the selection team's assessment of which one is more likely to give us the best product. We know both are capable of doing it. But we really are trying to get a feel for what service level we'll actually get in this project will be. And that's what's unusual about this is I couldn't complete that by this meeting. I expect to complete that this week. And for the the schedule for the NOAV, I'd like to be looking at trying toward in mid-December. And and for me to do that, a council decision would be very helpful tonight.
Okay.
Any questions?
Unless there's objection, I'd I'd move to authorize the city manager to select a consultant for negotiation of an engineering services agreement as as budgeted, which appears to be a hundred thousand dollars, of which approximately eighty thousand dollars is anticipated to be covered by the state clean water revolving loan fund.
Second.
So under discussion, I think that was part of what maybe what your concerns might have been is that there's a contingency on the funding. So if the funding is not met through the revolving loan fund, I I'm just because it's part of the motion and it wasn't part of the item last listed on the consent agenda. So was there some concern there?
Well, is this is going to be a not-to-exceed contract for a hundred thousand dollars? And you're you're very confident that the clean water state revolving loan fund will be available?
Very confident that will be available. And and I don't think that'll be an issue at all. The portion that that I expect that that why I said it would be eighty and twenty is is because the eighty percent would be entirely forgivable. But because we're trying to accelerate this, there's a portion of this work that we would like to get started before we know the state will have approved the final project. So I would be looking to actually start work on the total ammonia nitrogen in late December or January. The likely time for the state to finish its review of the engineering services agreement is more like the end of January. So we will incur some city expense because of the acceleration. And that's that's why the eighty and twenty are there.
And and if I I think the percent of any clean water state revolving loan fund applications that are denied is really no.
It's low.
Yeah.
And and as well, this is work they've told us we need to do. So it it truly should be eligible because they've told us to do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And if for some reason it was denied, the funds would be coming out of our water and sewer funds.
Yeah. So it it could be funded, but I truly don't expect that.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Representative Anthony, I see your hand is up. Is it related to this?
No, I want to go back a bit. So have the vote first, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Anthony, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. While Bill is here, I I wanted to put two things together that have come up over the last month in council discussions about future development and the available capacity on the sewer side. I note that Mr. Ahern has said, there are many improvements on the sewer side, but they're revenue constrained. I want to put that together with a report that the council heard from the planning commission, which essentially said, we have development capacity for roughly forty more percent of the capacity of our sewer system. For purposes of discussion, let's assume those are right figures. Counselor Hemmerich said, you know, we really have to think long and hard whether we want to focus that capacity on infill development, or as is some times requested, expansionist development. And my question, I guess, and it's as much an observation, many communities essentially say, we have this sewer capacity, it's finite. Why don't we have a fee to reserve sewer capacity? And we've never in the city of Barry, as much as we've reformed, so to say, our water and sewer sewer fund, segregated it, done readiness charges, done a bunch of innovative things. We've never focused on the issue of the fact that this is this capacity is precious. We're saving it, or at least we're not committing it. But notice that non-commitment, it at the moment is free. Well, it won't be free when, in fact, it's used up. And many communities, as I say, Berlin being an example, they actually say, if you want us to save capacity for you, you developer, you institution, you better speak up. Because by the way, when it's all gone, we're not going to invest in expanded capacity, even if we physically could. It's it's an open question as to whether we physically could anyway. So I just throw that out there. I I think Counselor Hemmick is Hemmerich is right. The infill capacity obviously is the lower-priced target because the pipes are already in the ground. But when you're talking about expanding the system, then you really are saying, we're going to devote that capacity to something which will pay us off in twenty years, but not for twenty years. Because you're going to invest in the expansion long before you connect the revenues. So I I just think there's worth a debate as to how you want to value that capacity and whether there should be a charge for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's two different pieces there. One is about the capacity of the system and one is about pipes that are currently in place. So capacity of the system we've discussed before, because even if it was an infill project or additional projects in another location, you're still adding people that are users of water and sewer. So you need to know capacity for one. And I think the last time we had the conversation, we were about seventy percent capacity. I don't know if that's still a true statement.
So so I think we're at a lower proportion of flow capacity. But our wastewater strengths are higher than they were projected to be. And again, in the in the preliminary work we've done on rate structure, and I was smiling behind my mask the whole time because the right now, our intermunicipal agreement is entirely silent to what I call the opportunity cost component of this. And and that is that uncommitted capacity. And it allows, because it's there, the opportunity for growth. And and because we don't have a strong allocation former formula that protects the city, right now, that that isn't necessarily preserved for the city. And this is the city's utility. And it can and should be. And for us to preserve it and allow it to be used by others really should involve some type of of substantial fee. And so that is one of the things that we were looking at in the intermunicipal agreement for discussion. We haven't fleshed that out, but that was the heading we had under was an opportunity value that's related to the ability to develop. And and without the capacity for wastewater or without the capacity for water, you can't build that plant that would employ a hundred people.
And then the second part of that question, I think, is more about the the size of the pipes and the location where it's going to, where I believe we did ask that the project development that was launched from Richardson Road, they paid for, I think it was a fifty-fifty match in order for that to go in. So that was one of those types of deals where we do know that it was an addition onto the system, but they did chip in for the the procurement of that system.
Again, so so we're we're moving in that direction to respond to these. I I think there's still work to be done. So what we did with the developer that that expanded in Barrytown but connected to our system was we assessed the cost of what serving them would be. And we told them they had to participate in that. And and they agreed to. So so I think that needs to be something that's developed into a codified water regulation. And and we're not there yet. Certainly, if it came up tomorrow, we would do the same thing. But if if you change personnel, you lose that that organizational memory. And so you really need to have it put into a regulation. The last time we adopted our water regulations was nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen what?
Eighty-two.
Almost as old as me.
Better than eighteen ninety.
So any other questions on the water sewer system?
Yes.
So you could develop a system where you charge a higher rate for retaining some capacity that they're not yet using, say, for Barrytown. But you could also reserve some capacity for Barry City for development.
So so those things are possible. And and what it what it amounts to is we need to develop that formula, be prepared to defend it, and then to enter the negotiation and be successful. And and we're going to start moving some of the pieces that we have sole control over to make sure that the city is protected. Where the town would like to be responsive to us.
Last comment I'll make first is I I believe the manager was going to have a little bit in his manager's report about this because we're talking about approaching, we call it bite-sized pieces of the system, because you have to evaluate certain pieces before you can go and have that negotiation with another entity. Because if you don't have that information, it's just like the the conversations we've had earlier tonight. If you have nothing to look at, then what are you discussing? So.
But thank you, Mayor. So for the scope of work that the two prospective vendors are looking at here, is there any evaluation of the city's policy structure or the ordinance as part of this review?
So with regard to high strength, high-strength waste, yes. Because it goes right to that total ammonia nitrogen. And so right now, because the formula doesn't include a factor for high-strength waste, one of the things we really want to see very early is a suggestion on how we deal with that. And there are kind of two theories on how we go. One is that you deal with it as a financial disincentive that the city charges. And the other is a strict prohibition that says, you can't put that in our system. You build your own facility. And what comes out of your facility is allowed to come into our system. And then the the responsibilities on them. And and so the the Vermont D E C's pre-treatment program was actually turned over to municipalities by rule about eighteen months ago. And we looked at that and saw it as a very clear opportunity. We now have the authority to deal with this. Now, again, we simply have to exercise that authority. And we need to figure out whether we tell them, build your own plant. And these would be ARPA-eligible projects. So the business has a as a a unique opportunity to comply. Or if we decide that we'll try to take that effort on and allow it to come to us, but charge them for it. Again, we should have some funding sources to help accomplish that. So
But really, if we wanted to supercharge our fast-track and ordinance, a nineteen eighty-two ordinance review to start getting the structures in place to make sure that the the city has the reserve or the capacity and has that allocations reserved for its own development. Is that in this budget for the enterprise or?
So overall, no. The portion that I'm after is the high-strength waste formula so that I know what I should be charging. And we could move that forward right away. And that would actually help then in terms of of our revenues. But it would also be a disincentive so they wouldn't they wouldn't make mistakes that got out of their plant. So if you dump three thousand gallons of milk, the wastewater treatment plant doesn't see three thousand gallons of milk. And and right now, that is literally what happens. It comes to the plant. And that is one of the major sources of our our issues at the plant.
Steve, I see your hand is up.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to sort of add some meat to your comment about the the bite-sized chunks. For quite some time, we collaboratively have had on the pending agendas list three items dealing with the water wastewater enterprise funds. The first, and not a particular priority, but the first item is the review of the water wastewater agreements, which we've just been talking about. The the second is review of the water, at least the water system, if not the water and wastewater rate structures. And that's different from the rate schedule, the the rate structures. And then the third was presentation of five-year budgets for the water and wastewater fund. So we've bitten off the first bite tonight, subject to ratification next week. And Bill and I are working on the schedule to to move ahead on the others. And I'm not until I can talk with Bill, I'm not prepared to put a timeline on it. But so we've started attacking that list of three. We have one done, and we have two more to go.
Thank you. So anything else for Bill? Seeing none, thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Also, so looking at the time, I think the update on the bond projects, it was a a memo. There was missing budget information to go along with that. If council is fine with deferring that until our Saturday meeting, we should have all that information together. I think it'd be helpful for that. For the other items, G through J, those are the council items. It's late. I think we can put those on another one. And Counselor Hemmerich, I promise that we try to get to your old business item. And this is something that council has seen before already. So the council, if you are in a place where you'd be willing to approve the municipal body's appointment policy, then we could take that up for business, and that would be our last action for the night.
But is is nothing else time-sensitive on the the list that's?
So charter work group updates, they're providing us information. We could then respond back to see if there's anything else for charter changes. We have time for that cannabis, same thing. It has to do with an item to go on the ballot. The administrative bodies ordinance piece is actually to see if we need to wait for the charter change. I don't know all the pieces that are coming through from the charter work group, but it could impact with that administrative ordinance. We would actually have an it could actually eliminate sections if certain positions were eliminated, for example. So that would be a question of where they're at in order to affect it. And then the update on the volunteer information, that's, you know, something that I don't
And I I have to say, from the the charter changes, there has been much my end because everybody's flat up busy. So.
So we'll defer those to upcoming agendas, make sure that they're timely. But for the volunteer one, just because I think we're at a period where we're going to be requesting more volunteers. We've had a number of positions that people had submitted letters of resignation from. So we'd want to make sure we solicit. And I just want to make sure that we have that process in place in order to do so, if we're using the new process. So
I read it over. It seems fine. I'd move to approve.
So there's a motion to approve by Counselor Stockwell. Was there a second? Any discussion?
Thank you, Counselor Hemmerich, for your work on it. It was good to have a one process.
So the only question I actually have on this is there are a number of items that we put in there for making sure we don't discriminate. Two items that I didn't see on there, one was veteran status. And I that's one of the things that is protected under federal law. And the other is not in Vermont law, but in several other places, it's a political affiliation. So basically, we wouldn't discriminate on someone because if they're a progressive or a Democrat or something like that. If council is fine with those two additions, that's all I was going to suggest.
That sounds fine. We'll accept that.
Okay. With that noted, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed, nay. Okay, thank you very much. We are at roundtable. Is there anything? We'll start with Counselor Booton. Do you have anything you'd like to add? That's a real?
Happy holidays, everybody. Very tired pets.
Counselor Hemmerich.
Happy holidays to everyone.
And just quick notes, I do want to say thank you to Bill for your quick response up on Merchant Street. And I'm glad that was able to work out that the temperature worked out, so the painting could happen.
I assume Jesse knows that that happened. That he would get it. It all happened.
Well, not the bulbous.
The painting, nice.
The, there was a conversation for transit after hours for the Central Mount Medical Center. Four of us had responded that we were going to go. So to avoid any forum, I'm not going to go if between the other three that were interested.
I may not be able to go because I have surgery that day.
Yeah. I'm going for work, but I'm here.
For for those of you unaware, it's just a really quick bullet. It's a, people are going up to the hospital. They don't have personal transportation. They wait in the R A, they get stuck up at the hospital, they can't get home. And there's no transit service after hours. And and so it's become this issue both for the hospital staff and for an individual patients and for our residents here in the city who can't get back home after after receiving medical care.
And with decreased taxi services and then who pays for this?
This is a thing that's not just Barry City. This is.
There isn't any taxi service.
Pardon me?
There isn't any taxi service.
And then the last thing to just note is just for awareness, two people, Joel Feldman and Emily Stein from the Safe Road Alliances. I had discussed with them, Joel does presentations on basically safety while driving. We do a lot of discussion on, you know, the roads themselves. But they speak directly to either adults or students on things like distracted driving. So texting while driving. And they will be willing to come to the city to do a presentation and by to the city meaning remotely. So if we set up a time for them, we could make that available. I reached out to the B U S D. They're also looking at setting up a similar session for students directly. And we're hoping that between the two, a little more education on how to drive safely will parallel with the improvements that we're looking to do with the streets themselves. So just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And with that, I have nothing else. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Rose has her.
Please signify by saying aye. And opposed nay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Michael.
I just wanted to say thank you.